Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, law and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated.
I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? Councillor Dixon.
Chair, I wish to advise that Councillor Ryan Murphy will be absent today and I move that he be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded. It has been moved by Councillor Dixon and seconded by Councillor Givney for Councillor Murphy to be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Are there any further apologies? Confirmation of minutes, please.
Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,780th meeting held on Tuesday, the 18th of November, 2025 be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded. It has been moved by Councillor Dixon and seconded by Councillor Givney that the minutes of the 4,780th meeting of council held on the 18th of November, 2025 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, I would like to call on Ms Eleanor Katahanis, who will address the chamber on Brisbane Brass II. You can proceed. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Lord Mayor and Councillors, thank you for the opportunity to address the chamber today. My name is Eleanor Katahanis and I have the privilege of serving as musical director of Brisbane Brass II. It is an honour to speak about our history, our achievements and our continued commitment to representing and enriching the city of Brisbane. Brisbane Brass was established in 1981 through the merger of the Valley Concert Band and the South Eastern District RSL Band. Over more than four decades, it has developed into one of Australia's most respected brass band organisations. Our three ensembles, Brisbane Brass I, II and III, now include more than 130 musicians ranging in age from schoolchildren to retirees. This intergenerational spirit is one of our strengths and it reflects the wider character of our city, diverse, welcoming and community minded. As the conductor of Brisbane Brass II, I am immensely proud of the ensemble I lead. BBII has built a reputation for strong musicianship, a willingness to take on challenging repertoire and a culture of dedication, kindness and collaboration. Our members give their time freely because they believe in the value of community music and the importance of contributing to Brisbane's cultural life. This past year, our ensemble experienced a milestone that will remain with us forever. BBII had the great honour of travelling to Osaka to perform at World Expo 2025 as part of the prestigious cultural programme in the Australian Pavilion, representing Brisbane, Queensland and Australia on the international stage. This was truly a once in a lifetime opportunity to share the sound of our city with global audiences, to stand proudly as ambassadors for Brisbane and to show the strength of community music from our region was an extraordinary privilege. The experience strengthened our determination to continue the musical legacy that Brisbane Brass has built over four decades. We were turned from Expo inspired, motivated and committed to promoting Brisbane not only at future state and national events, but whenever opportunities arise to represent our city beyond Australia's borders. A key priority for us moving forward is to deepen our engagement with the Brisbane community. As an ensemble, we believe strongly in the value of local performances and in bringing music into public spaces, civic events and neighbourhood gatherings. We want to ensure that residents across Brisbane, from the inner city to the outer suburbs, can experience high quality live music in an accessible and welcoming environment. To support this vision, I am eager to work closely with councillors, council programmes and community partners. We would welcome opportunities to expand our involvement in initiatives such as Bands in Parks Programme, school outreach and multicultural events and local festivals. Our musicians are passionate about contributing to the cultural vibrancy of Brisbane and we believe that deeper collaborations with council can help us reach even more residents. I would also like to offer my sincere thanks to Councillors Vicky Howard, Stephen Toomey and Penny Wolf for their ongoing support of Brisbane Brass. Their engagement with our organisation has been deeply appreciated by our musicians and supporters. The arts thrive when local leaders recognise their value and we are grateful for the encouragement these councillors have shown. Madam Chair, Lord Mayor and Councillors, leading Brisbane Brass II is both a privilege and a responsibility and I have seen firsthand the joy, connection and pride that music brings to people across our city. Whether performing in a community hall, at City Hall, outdoors in a park or on a stage halfway around the world, our goal remains the same, to represent Brisbane with excellence, integrity and heart. We are committed to continuing the strong musical legacy of our organisation. We are determined to promote Brisbane on state, national and international stages and most importantly, we are dedicated to serving our local community, the people who make this city the vibrant and inspiring place it is. Thank you once again for the opportunity to address the chamber and for your continued support of the arts in Brisbane. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Katahanis. I will now call upon Councillor Howard to respond.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and it gives me a great deal of pleasure to respond to Eleanor and I keep running into you at all sorts of wonderful things, but I do remember just before you went to Japan, I think it was the Japanese consul, I sat next to the Japanese consul, I'm thinking, my goodness me, you had so many people here that evening and it was just delightful and I was so thrilled to hear how well the trip to Osaka went and to know that you represented us so proudly and I think we were able to give you a few, some buttons that people were able to take. Badges are very important in Japan, I understand and so, look, we just think that what you've done is nothing short of amazing and to represent Brisbane, Queensland and Australia at Osaka on our behalf, we're just so proud of you. So thank you and to Brisbane Brass II. I think the last time I saw you were at Corral, there's musicians coming off the stage and there was Eleanor and it's just so lovely to see you at so many of those events and on behalf of Councillor Wolf and Councillor Toomey, we know how much joy you were bringing to Brisbane. I'm also rather pleased to know that you practise at the Gap State High School because that's where I happened to go a very long time ago, but we are so very proud of you. We look forward to working very closely with you. We love our Bands in the Park Programme and we know that you're part of that and we'd love you to be even more involved and we know that there are so many wonderful activities that are happening across Brisbane in the lead up to something that will be happening here in a very few short years and how important it's going to be that we have our community bands involved in that. So thank you for coming and sharing your story with us today. We look forward to working with you and best of luck for the future and water holes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Howard, and thank you, Ms Katahanis, for coming in today. Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or a Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Givney.
Thank you, Chair. My question is for the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, the Shunah Council is making Brisbane's lifestyle even better with the $2 summer dips. Can you please update the chamber on when this much loved initiative will return to Brisbane pools?
Lord Mayor.
Councillor Cassidy is very excited about $2 summer dips. He knows it's happening on the 1st of September, yes, indeed it is, 1st of December and that is in fact just next Monday. So when we're gathering here next Tuesday, you know that there will be people splashing in our pools right across Brisbane enjoying what is a wonderful programme. Now, we introduced $2 summer dips a number of years ago to provide real cost of living relief and create more to see and do across our city and it has been so well received and so popular and so it's back next Monday and the people of Brisbane have provided overwhelmingly positive feedback about this initiative and I could talk about it at length, but I want to use the words of some residents who have been in contact with us about it. Nick from Annali said, and I quote, "I just want to express my ongoing support for the council's $2 swim initiative. It's fantastic to see the community making use of council pools in such high numbers and everyone appears to be having a great time." Christie from Winham was able to enter a triathlon because of the initiative and she said, "Ever since your $2 dips initiative, I've been able to increase my swims to three or four times a week, which has been a game changer in my life. I've thoroughly enjoyed riding my bike down to the local pool and being part of my local swimming community. It's improved my mental health, my strength and my cardiovascular fitness and it's been amazing during summer to cool down." Another resident, Rosie, told us, "I just wanted to let you know how grateful we are for the $2 summer dips. We have no air conditioning at home and no pool, so exploring the different council pools and having lots of swims has made these holidays so much more enjoyable." We've had plenty of people asking if it will make a return as well over the non-summer period, people have been contacting, is it back again? Is it coming back? And we saw Michelle from Hawthorn say, "Do you anticipate bringing back the $2 summer dips programme next summer? My toddler and I really enjoyed having regular swims last summer at Combsley Pool. I know it might be too early to advise, but just giving you the feedback that we loved it and we really hope the programme returns." Well, we can confirm that, Michelle, it's back, it's back on Monday and head down to the local pool. But in terms of the success of this initiative, these comments and many, many more from residents just show the impact and the positivity that surrounds this programme, but also when you look at the numbers, so the Brisbane local government area has 1.3 million people in it and over summer, we had 726,000 visits to our pool. So we're talking more than, the equivalent of more than half the population showed up at our pools over summer as a result of this initiative. That is an extraordinary number of people and it is a wonderful thing to see and it's one of the reasons why we're continuing it again this summer and it's something we remain committed to. We can do $2 summer dips or provide $2 summer dips because we keep the budget balanced and we manage the finances responsibly and so this is a programme that is funded by making sure we have a balanced budget and we look after the finances of this council responsibly so that we can do things like this. And so we'll continue doing it, we're committed to it and I welcome all Brisbane residents to jump in the pool next Monday and every day after that throughout summer.
Further questions? Councillor Collier.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, last week I asked you a very simple question about bus driver safety. Your response was unfortunately dismissive, hurtful and highly political. The bus drivers who listened to your response agree. Instead of blaming a political party or a government who hasn't been in office for over a year now, can you please answer the question truthfully today? Why aren't buses with full screens available for drivers when they request them?
Lord Mayor.
Well, Madam Chair, there's only one side of politics making this issue political and it's the Australian Labor Party. They did it last week and they're doing it again this week, but what I can say is this, no violence or attack or abuse against our bus drivers is acceptable. We've always had that view and we've always worked incredibly hard to support our wonderful bus operators who do a fantastic job. Now, 99% of the passengers on buses are good people who do the right thing and they're also the ones that when they leave say thank you to the driver and appreciate the service. But there is a small number of people who do the wrong thing and they create a situation of unsafety for some of our bus drivers and it's something we're working hard to address. We work hard both as a council and we work hard in partnership with the state government as well. And what I referred to last week was the simple fact that we had as a council rolled out partial barriers across our fleet. Now, the partial barriers were based on a trial that was done a number of years ago where we tested a number of different barriers and those partial barriers came out of that trial as the preferred option. But as things have progressed and as the situation has changed, there's now been calls for full barriers. And so the difference between the partial barriers and the full barriers is obviously full encapsulation for the bus operators or drivers. Now, the partial barriers have served their purpose, but for many drivers, they don't feel safe enough with the partial barriers and I understand that, that is one of those things that is a legitimate view to hold and that's why the previous government announced the programme to support bus operators and that includes Brisbane City Council in installing full barriers. And so that programme began, but then the funding was stopped. And so there was an allocation given, there was political credit claimed by the former government, but then they stopped the programme, they defunded the programme, it wasn't funded on an ongoing basis. And so we've then called on the new government to introduce a programme to continue that funding and they have, they've actually given us $950,000 to continue the rollout and so close to a million dollars. And I can show all councillors, there's more than 300 buses in our fleet now that have the full encapsulation and that's the type of encapsulation that we're talking about there. Now, when a driver feels unsafe with a partial barrier and they request a bus with a full barrier, our staff, our team in TFB are instructed to do everything possible to try and accommodate that and they want to. You know, this is a legitimate concern and something that we support them encouraging, accommodating. And so with more than 300 buses in the fleet, when you're talking about night routes, for example, night services, you know, we obviously want to prioritise the full encapsulated buses for night services or particular routes where there are known safety issues and we do that and so there's a process to do that. Right now, we're actually installing more of these barriers with the money that the state government has given us. We want it to be an ongoing programme and we're getting on with the job so that even more buses will be available. And so for the situation that Councillor Collier had referred to last week, I must admit, I have not been able to verify the details of what happened. I haven't been able to get to the bottom of it because some of the information that was asked in that question, I haven't been able to verify. So in terms of what exactly happened and why a bus wasn't provided, I can't answer that because we don't actually have a record of that situation that Councillor Collier raised. Now, I'm not suggesting that it didn't happen, it's just that I can't get a record, the transport for Brisbane couldn't provide me with a record, but what I will say...
Councillor Griffiths. Councillor Griffiths, do not call out across the chamber. And I do caution. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What I will say is that we want our team at TFB to feel safe, we are continuing to work with the state government to roll out more of these full encapsulated buses and so that we're more and more available, but where a bus driver requests those buses, we'd love to see those buses made available. That's our, that's our approach, that's what we want to see happen and so from my point of view, from Councillor Wine's point of view, from this administration's point of view, that should be accommodated wherever possible.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Adaman. One moment, Councillor Adaman. Point of order, Councillor Collier.
Chair, I rise to suspend standing orders in order for me to move a motion that this council stops production of the Living in Brisbane newsletter for one year, which would fund 80 full protective bus screens with inbuilt PA systems.
Seconded. It has been moved by Councillor Collier and seconded by Councillor Cassidy to suspend standing orders to move a motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by Councillor Cassidy and seconded by Councillor Collier. Councillors, ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the noise has had the voting being eight in favour and 17 against.
That has lost. Councillors, please resume your seats.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, a few weeks ago, this administration raised concerns about the Bureau of Meteorology's decision to cease support for the Critical Environment Flood Warning software. Can you please update the chamber on this matter?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Adaman. I know this is an issue that you're concerned about, as are many others in this chamber. We've been talking about this quite a bit recently because it's important and because, you know, we just saw yesterday how quickly weather can arrive in Brisbane, how quickly creeks can rise, how quickly storms can hit our city and even just yesterday, alerts were issued for creek levels rising. Places like Rocky Waterholes Creek in Salisbury, alerts were issued to residents based on rising creeks in those areas and it shows just how important this system is. Now, the system which Councillor Davis has explained in previous weeks was always provided by the BOM and it was available to all councils and it allows updated creek levels to be provided every five minutes and things can change quite quickly and so what we're seeing is effectively updates to the creek levels every five minutes through the current system. That current system, the BOM is ending support for. They're moving across to a different system which delivers less, just like their website delivers less. It probably costs more and it delivers less. And we've simply been pointing out that this actually provides a reduced level of service to the people of Brisbane who rely on these creek alerts. Now, the reduced level of service goes from five minutes, not to 10 minutes, it goes to 15 minutes. So instead of every five minutes, alerts will be issued every 15 minutes or new levels will be read every 15 minutes. Now, that difference is significant and you ask anyone that lives in an area that is flood prone, ask anyone that lives close to a creek that floods, they will tell you that the difference between updates every five minutes and updates every 15 minutes is significant. And so we're simply saying that the BOM should provide a like-for-like service. We've been very consistent about this. They've been consistent in saying it's not our problem and that councils should get their own service if they don't like the one that we're providing. Now, interestingly, the new service that provides less is provided by a company that also provides a better product and is now selling that better product to councils. So you can see what's going on here. So BOM has chosen to spend money on a service that's not as good as what we've got now and they're like, if you want a better service, then go to this company and pay for it. They were paying for it until now and so we have now twice applied to the federal government to help us transition to a product to replace this with something that people would expect. The, the cost of doing that, particularly in the first year, will approach half a million dollars and this is just blatant cost shifting from a federal government agency onto local councils. So if you take that cost for us and you multiply that across councils, there's 500 councils across Australia, many of them rely on systems like this, that's a lot of cost being pushed on to local councils. Local councils collect three cents out of every tax dollar paid in Australia. The federal government collects 81 cents out of every tax dollar collected in Australia. This BOM system should be properly funded by the federal government, so it's a slap in the face to find out just recently that we got rejected for the second time in a row when we were applying for federal funding to support a transition over to a good system. And so what we'll be doing now is we'll be asking for help from the federal members right across Brisbane. We know we have many new and enthusiastic federal members that were elected and we need their help. We need the help of Madonna Jarrett and Cara Cook, we need the help of Milton Dick, we need the help of Annika Wells, we need, we need the help of Renee Coffey and I could go on, but we need their help to make sure that their residents get access to the data, not every 15 minutes, but every five minutes like they're getting at the moment. And so we'll be writing to them to make sure that they advocate on behalf of their residents to get this system funded. We'll keep applying for federal funding and we would appreciate their support because this needs to happen and if they can't give us the funding, well then, BOM just needs to spend a little bit more, they've spent $96 million on their website, to give the system that does the job for local residents.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Johnston.
Yep, that's all right, yep. My question is to Councillor Davis. Councillor Davis, two weeks ago, I raised problems with bin collection for an elderly resident in Belfast Street, Yorongah. This is one of a number of systemic problems with repeated missed bin collections, not only in Belfast Street, but also in Fanny Street, Annali at the top end and the Honour Avenue frontage of Lily Street, Sherwood. These have been requests that have been reported on multiple occasions to council over many years in some cases. I have never had more complaints in my time as a councillor than this year with systemic missed bin collections. What action is council taking to rectify the systemic missed bin collections at these three locations to provide a reliable waste collection service for residents who pay for it in their rates?
Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, I'd like to thank Councillor Johnston for the question. Councillor Johnston, I can confirm that with regard to your question from two weeks ago that we were able to reach out to the family of, of your resident to discuss the challenges with the bins and my understanding is that that was sought out and resolved for that person, so I'm pleased to hear that. With regards to your comments regarding those other two streets, well, I would have to investigate those. What I would like to share, of course, with the chamber is the volume of bin pickups that, that we undertake on a weekly basis. We have 170 trucks working very, very hard across the, across the city and we pick up per day on average 170,000 bins. So if you times that by 20 for a monthly amount and then of course you times that by yearly amount, we are talking a significant number of bin pickups. Our very hardworking WARS staff are always in conversations with the contractor, ensuring that they are aware of any concerns that are raised regarding missed bin collections and of course that will continue to be done. We know that people want their bins collected. I want my bin collected, but we've got to make sure that there are opportunities for the drivers to get access to those bins, that the company deals with a range of... to those bins, that the company deals with a range of different issues regarding, at certain times of the year, illness. What I can share, Madam Chair, is that this time of year, from about August through to December and into January, the amount of waste that goes into the bins also starts to increase. Those that are before me, councillor Hutton and councillor Marks, would understand, of course, that that means that bins fill up faster, which means they have to go more regularly to our resource recovery centres to be emptied and then go back on to the road. Some missed bin collections, probably a little preemptive. We are very happy for our residents to call our contact centre or online, let us know that their bin has been missed. But there are, of course, occasions where it's simply that the contractor is running a little late to that area and the bin will be collected. So we are working very, very hard. We know how important it is to have our bins collected in a timely fashion. We are working with the contractor to make sure that they are doing what they should be doing and we will be on top of them, making sure that they are honouring their contract obligations. But with regards to those two particular areas that you were talking about, councillor Johnston, I would need to investigate that and get back to you in due course. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further questions? Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to Chair of City Planning, Suburban Renewal and Economic Development Committee, councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, can you please update the chamber on Shrima Council's latest plan to unlock even more housing choice in one of our most vibrant precincts?
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I thank councillor Adams for the question. The Shrima Council has a proud record of ensuring that Brisbane remains the best place to live, work, relax and play. And our latest initiative is all about allowing people, whether they're renters, students, families or aspiring homeowners, to live near where they work, relax, and in this case, certainly play. The Fortitude Valley Sustainable Growth Precinct Plan is a fantastic opportunity to support and revitalise one of Brisbane's most iconic precincts, a precinct where culture, entertainment and community come together. It's a hub of activity, Madam Chair. Almost 28,000 people work in the valley and around 11,500 people call it home. It's got great transport connections with plenty of bus services and the train station at its heart. It's also the live music capital of Australia with more venues than any other precinct. That's something we're proud of and it's a big part of what makes the valley special. But we know that the valley has its challenges with the current neighbourhood plan being about 15 years old. A lot has changed since then. We've seen growth, new businesses and new opportunities. It's time for a refresh and to make sure the valley continues to thrive, building on its strengths so it clearly can offer more to the community. We'll be looking at the land surrounding Fortitude Valley Train Station, including parts of Wickham Street, Anne Street, Brunswick Street and St Paul's Terrace, as well as some areas further afield. We want to help create more homes for people of all stages of life and we'll look to review building heights in this area to allow for some well-designed urban renewal. As we've said many times before, it's best to grow up, not out, so that we can protect our suburban bushland while creating more homes in a well-serviced area. We want to help create more opportunities for the things that make life easy, smooth and enjoyable: connectivity, more retail, dining, hospitality and so much more. We want to support the valley as a thriving day and night precinct anchored by live music and great entertainment. And importantly, we want to enhance the streetscape of this area, focusing on upgrading the public realm so that it's easier and safer for people to relax and move through the area, supporting tourism and investment. Unlike other areas, Madam Chair, we know that this area will become even more exciting as 2032 arrives. The venues for the 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games will place Fortitude Valley at the centre of the action with the Victoria Park Stadium, Aquatic Centre and Athletes' Village just a stone's throw away. Laying the groundwork for links to these key venues is something we're looking to do through this plan so that everyone can get smooth and safe access to them when 2032 finally arrives. But this plan isn't just about the games, it's about the future. We want the area to be ready for increased visitation during the Games and beyond, leaving a lasting legacy that will benefit Brisbane for generations to come. We're excited to work with the community on this project. Later this month, they'll have the chance to share their ideas and tell us how they would like the valley to evolve, helping us prepare a draft plan that will then return to the community for more feedback. Fortitude Valley has always been a place where people come together. This plan will make it stronger, safer and more connected. It will create opportunities for residents, businesses and visitors. It will protect what makes the valley unique while preparing it for the future. And we look forward to progressing this initiative for the benefit of all, including those who will come here in 2032 and beyond.
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, the Chinese-made buses used in council's City Loop fleet have sparked cybersecurity concerns because of the company's ability to control their buses remotely. Did you discuss this issue with the Yutong Group when you visited China recently in your official capacity?
Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair. And as you know, councillor Cassidy has a long history of criticizing buses made in China. He's made some comments about Chinese people in relation to the Yutong...
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Is councillor Wines debating the question?
No, councillor.
Yes, he is.
Councillor, I don't uphold your point of order. Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
I think what councillor Wines just said is deeply offensive and potentially defamatory. And I'd ask that you ask him to withdraw and apologize that last comment.
Councillor Wines, will you withdraw that comment?
I withdraw and apologize, but I clearly recall councillor Cassidy making some comment along the lines of a cheap Chinese takeout and suggesting and making generally, and having a tone generally critical of East Asian things. That is my recollection, but if he finds that in any way offensive, of course, I withdraw and apologize. But councillor Cassidy, just because things are made by factories in China does not make them bad. In fact, the Lord Mayor rightly points out that his, like all of our iPhones, are largely assembled in China. That does not make them necessarily bad, nor does it make people who come from China bad or the Chinese communities here in Brisbane worthy of criticism, which I think is completely unfair to make that inference. I think that people who come to this country from all around the world...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
One moment, please, councillor Wines. Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Madam Chair, no one has made any criticism of people from China in Brisbane or anywhere else. The councillor Wines's statements are deeply offensive to residents of Brisbane. They are not in keeping with the code of conduct and they are not in answer to the question that was asked about buses. So will you take action under the meeting's local law to address councillor Wines's behaviour?
I don't uphold your point of order, councillor Johnston. Councillor Wines is answering the question and has five minutes to do so. Councillor Wines.
But once again, I mean, there are places in this, that, there are places in this world, like Shenzhen, for example, which is a sister city, which has a significant bus fleet, which uses BYD engines, which, and the BYD vehicle is increasingly used by people here in Brisbane. And the idea that electric vehicles or vehicles made in Shenzhen...
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Councillor Wines has been talking and using the term inference and talking very widely here. I'm specifically talking about, and what I asked about were cybersecurity concerns, specifically about Yutong buses, that's not inference, these are facts that have been widely aired, and whether councillor Wines discussed these concerns with the Yutong Group when he met with them, when he went to China. It's a very simple question.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. And councillor Wines, as I said, has five minutes to answer the question. Councillor Cassidy, don't call out. Councillor Wines.
Now, councillor Cassidy just shouted out, why am I talking about BYD? Because BYD in the Cantonese production district make the electric engines that power the electric vehicles produced in southern China. All right, so, once again, councillor Cassidy makes allegations and inferences about things he does not conceive nor understand. He does not understand who and how electric vehicles are made. He does not understand how things are produced that he uses each and every day. He likes to allege that I have, I think the inference of the question is that I'm either unaware or involved in some kind of espionage, which I am not. Can I assure all councillors and all residents of Brisbane, I am not involved in espionage in any way.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Griffiths.
Can you bring councillor Wines back to the actual question? It wasn't about espionage.
Thank you, councillor Griffiths. Councillor Wines. Councillor Wines.
And as we well know, there are not, not everybody in our community embraces renewable technology and, or embraces the threat of climate change. And councillor Cassidy numbers himself among those people because he does not, because here he is clearly fighting electric vehicles. Now, why he does not support electric vehicles, that's a question for him, but I encourage him to embrace the future and to accept climate change as real. I think he should do that. I think it's something that he would benefit from. But the idea that there was an alternative when the Yutong buses were purchased, when they were purchased in 2020, 90% of all electric vehicles in the world were produced by Chinese manufacturers. Now, to have the electric buses we use, which people use conveniently each and every day here during the cycle around the city, they had to be purchased from China and from a place called, from a company called Yutong. Again, the likelihood that Yutong would be in Guangzhou is very limited because Yutong is a northern Chinese company. But again, councillor Cassidy does not bother to learn these things, he makes the effort to accuse people of things. Once again...
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Collier.
Chair, I think maybe councillor Wines misheard the question, or I don't know, because it is one of the strangest, most irrelevant answers I've ever heard. Is he aware of cybersecurity concerns or not? Did he raise them or not? He's not being relevant to the question.
It is not your place to judge how that is answered.
Under the meeting's local law, he is not answering the question.
Don't uphold your point of order. And if you don't like the answer, you can address it in GB. Councillor Wines? Councillor Collier?
Thanks, Madam Chair. But as I say, we use four Yutong buses. Yutong, of course, is a northern Chinese company. They are not, they are not centred around southern China at all. Also, let's keep this in context, the four vehicles we use as a trial could have only been purchased from China and the four vehicles we're discussing represent a very small percentage of the 1,200 vehicles that are used each and every day to move Brisbane, to move people around Brisbane. And again, councillor Cassidy has attacked Chinese companies, he's attacked Swiss companies. There are quality products built all around the world and I think it's important that...
Councillor Cassidy, I'll caution you about calling out across the chamber when another councillor is on their feet. Councillor Wines.
But again, I think that it's important to recognise that quality products can be made in a range of places and that people can benefit from them in a range of ways. If people are seriously concerned about the Yutong buses sending secret information to the CCP, they probably should be...
One moment, councillor Wines. Councillor Cassidy.
I realise councillor Wines only has a few seconds left. So my point of order is around relevance. I asked whether he has raised this serious issue with Yutong Group or not. He hasn't answered the question.
Councillor, as I just recently said to councillor Collier, you cannot object to the answer just because it's not to your satisfaction. And I do ask councillors to stop obstructing the meeting, making excessive points of order. Councillor Wines. Just one moment, councillor Wines. Just wait for the chamber to be quiet. Councillor Wines.
If you are concerned that the Yutong buses are sending secret messages to China, I would encourage people to review their use of their iPhones and of TikTok. Now, I trust, I trust that councillor Cassidy would not go anywhere near TikTok. If he's concerned about Yutong, he must be desperately afraid of TikTok.
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Wolf.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And my question is to the Chair of Communities and the Arts, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, the Shrima Council is making Brisbane's lifestyle even better with our much-loved festive season programming. Can you please update the chamber on what's in store for Christmas in Brisbane this year?
Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. And through you, I thank councillor Wolf for your question. And can I just say, I absolutely love this time of year because there's something truly magical about Christmas in Brisbane. And under the Shrima Council, that magic is bigger, brighter and more joyful than ever before. And through you, Madam Chair, we just have to look in our chamber to see that we have a Christmas, two Christmas trees and some decorations. And through you, Madam Chair, may I say to councillor Collier, who I know loves Christmas because she told me a couple of weeks ago, come on councillor Collier, we need to see some Christmas decorations on that side of the chamber. We've got two weeks left, but may I get back to... Well, we like spreading Christmas joy all around Brisbane. So this year's Christmas in Brisbane programme is a spectacular celebration of everything that makes our city the lifestyle capital of Australia. It's about bringing people together, it's about creating unforgettable memories and it's about delivering festive fun for families right across Brisbane. Now, the festivities officially kick off this Friday with the lighting of the Christmas tree in King George Square. This is always a special moment and this year it's going to be even more dazzling with a performance by Australian Idol winner and country music star Dylan Wright and an all-new fireworks finale that will light up the night sky. From there, the city transforms into a wonderful, wonderland of Christmas cheer. And I'm thrilled to share that many of our much-loved favourites are returning, including the Enchanted Garden at Roma Street Parkland, which is celebrating its 10th year. From humble beginnings, it's grown into Brisbane's most anticipated light show event and tickets are already on sale. So I encourage everyone to get in early because it's one of the most popular things to do at Christmas time and I thank councillor Davis and her team for making it happen for the 10th year. Also returning is the iconic City Hall Lights. With a brand new story titled A Christmas Blackout, written by Melissa Salisbury, it's a heartwarming tale of community spirit, of neighbours coming together to ensure Santa still finds his way, even when the lights go out. And of course, Madam Chair, the Lord Mayor's Christmas carols will once again take centre stage at River Stage on Saturday the 6th of December, featuring world-class entertainment and some of Australia's most talented performers. And we'll also have a free live broadcast of the carols at Roma Street Parklands so even more families can enjoy the magic of the night. Now, if you're heading into the city during December, you're in for a treat because Queen Street Mall is bursting with new experiences. And I know a lot of you have already started to experience a little taster of what's to come with the mall now fully decked out with decorations for Christmas. I want to say a big thank you to councillor Allen for making sure that our beautiful mall looks very Christmasy. And of course, we've got so many more things to talk about. A Christmas dreamscape, daily dance performances by Paradox Dance Company telling the story of a young girl discovering the true spirit of Christmas. We have a Christmas-themed magic and circus show featuring beloved Queen's End performers Rhett Marrow and Jason Gray. And lunchtime Christmas carols performed by Underground Opera, filling the city with festive classics. And let's not forget the return of Sonolumo, a nightly light and sound show projected across Queen's Wharf and the star Brisbane. It's immersive, it's vibrant and it's completely free. But Christmas in Brisbane isn't just about the city centre, it's about celebrating in every corner of our community. And that's why the Shrima Council is proudly supporting more than 50 free and affordable community celebrations across the suburbs, from street parties to carol nights. These events bring neighbours together and spread joy right across Brisbane. And Madam Chair, in our libraries, thank you councillor Hutton, we're delivering more than 45 free festive events across 33 branches. Because we know that Christmas is about connection and we want every resident to feel part of the celebration. And while we're celebrating, Chair, we're also giving back. The Lord Mayor's Chatterable Trust Christmas Appeal is once again collecting funds to support those in the community who need it most because Christmas is a time for generosity. This year's Christmas... This year's Christmas programme is not just about lights and carols, it's about creating a city where families feel welcome, where traditions are honoured and where memories are made. It's about supporting local performers, artists and businesses and showcasing the incredible talent we have right here in Brisbane. It's about making our city vibrant, inclusive and full of life.
Further questions councillor Massey?
Thank you Chair. My question is for the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, your administration had been preparing the Karupa Sustainable Growth Precinct Plan. The work on this plan stopped only after the LMP state government extended the TLPI, the Local Temporary Planning Instrument, clearly without notifying you. The extension of the Karupa TLPI effectively killed the community's chance to see what you had planned for the area. My question is, will you now release the draft precinct plan and can you confirm whether it is designated that the Visi site was going to be future parkland?
Lord Mayor?
Well, there's a lot of misinformation going around about this and we can see the local Labor MPs trying to out-green the Greens in being the next generation of NIMBYs wanting to stop housing during a housing crisis. The campaign is fully underway, I can see. But look, we're keen to see more people living close to great infrastructure, close to the inner city. We're keen to make sure that more homes are provided and we know that there's a pipeline of 4,000 units already in, in the system to make sure that we can build more homes that are desperately needed. But the plan for the Visi site was always that part of the site would be parkland or publicly accessible and part would be developed. That was always the plan. And in fact, if you look at the documents, it shows exactly that. And so our expectation is that will be the plan going forward. So there will be a...
Point of order Chair. The question was...
No councillor?
No, no, release the precinct plan and was the Visi site future parkland?
Thank you councillor. You don't need to repeat the question. Lord Mayor has five minutes to answer the question. And as I've already said, if it's not up to your satisfaction, it's not for you to question that, you can address it in general business. Lord Mayor?
Yeah, thank you. Let's see, this, it's interesting because the Greens and now some Labor MPs have completely misrepresented this concept of South Bank 2.0. What they've said is that the entire site should be parkland, it was never the plan. Let's have a look at South Bank 1.0. Okay, what's there? A convention centre, an arts precinct, buildings, residential buildings. There's a whole heap of built environment in South Bank 1.0 and that's how the parklands were funded. It's the same model that we had always suggested, that there would be some development with much-needed houses and that would then help support the provision of parkland. And so it was always going to be that part of the site would be publicly accessible land, creating a great precinct for people along the riverfront. And then the rest of the site would be available for new homes. That was the plan. And, and as far as I've, I know, and I've talked to the state government about their intention, that, that is their plan as well. They are expecting to see part of the site developed and part of the site become publicly accessible space along the riverfront. So, you know, run the scare campaigns if you wish. It was always the intent, right from the beginning, that there would be a mixture. How do you fund a great new parkland space? Do you magically pull money out of the air?
Well, the Greens do.
Well, the Greens do. They, they make this up all the time. Everything should be free, money grows on trees apparently. And so you funded South Bank 1.0, the original South Bank, through development. That's how it got built. And like I said, there's a convention centre there, there are a whole range of commercial and residential buildings along Grey Street. There's a lot going on there and that helped create an amazing parkland. And so the same principle can be used really well down in Karupa at the Visi site.
Councillors, that now ends question time.
Point of order Chair.
Point of order councillor Massey?
I couldn't help notice that the Lord Mayor didn't talk about the precinct plan. So I'd like to deliver something for the public record, to put on the profit record. It is, the title is Karupa set for thousands of new homes under anti-spore plan, the date October 10th. This is still publicly available.
Councillor, this is something that you should be bringing up in general business today, please?
No, I'm tabling it on the table. This is still up on the website, on the Lord Mayor's own website.
No, this isn't the time, as I said, general business will take it.
I'm tabling it here because it's appropriate to the question, Chair.
No, that you've asked the question, Lord Mayor's answered, we moved on. Question time had finished and I am asking you to please do it in general business as is procedure. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report... I'm speaking councillor. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee Report of the 17th of November 2025.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 17th of November 2025 be adopted.
Seconded. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the Deputy Mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the 17th of November 2025 be adopted. Lord Mayor? Point of order councillor Chongwa?
I'd like to take item A, B together and C separately in separate items for debating and voting purposes, please.
For debate as well as voting, okay, thank you. So Lord Mayor, items A and B, please.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Well, we've learnt some interesting things already this council meeting. I'm relieved to hear that councillor Wines is not engaged in espionage. That was a great sense of relief. So we, we, we also learnt sadly that councillor Cassidy has the dog whistle out.
One moment please, Lord Mayor. One moment, one moment. Point of order councillor Johnston?
Madam Chair, I refer you to section 33, subsection 8A and B of the meeting's local law. Are you aware that in answering a question, the following general rules apply. Neither the Lord Mayor nor the Civic Cabinet Chair shall debate the subject of the question and the answer will be relevant and succinct. Is councillor Andrew Wines's possible personal confession about espionage considered to be relevant and succinct in debate today?
That is something for me to determine councillor, so I do not uphold your point of order. Moving on, Lord Mayor?
As I was saying, sadly councillor Cassidy had the dog whistle out and we know what that question was all about. It was dog whistle politics. It was really disgraceful.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. Point of order councillor Cassidy?
I claim to be misrepresented.
I know your claim. Lord Mayor?
Now, I remember this is not the first time that councillor Cassidy has engaged in dog whistle politics because when we went out for a procurement, a competitive procurement for those four buses for the city loop, he did the same thing at the time. Now, at the time when we're out for procurement, as councillor Wines pointed out, 90% of the world's electric buses were being manufactured in China. And no local provider could actually meet our specifications to run the city loop. They couldn't do it. And when we went ahead and it was very clear that there was no local option to provide that service, councillor Cassidy labelled it as cheap Chinese takeaway. And we know what he was doing with that and it's really disappointing and not helpful. And he's taken the same approach today and it's really disappointing and not helpful. So, look, ultimately, if there is some kind of risk here, let's put it in perspective. These are four buses out of a fleet of about 1,200 and 33 buses, the last time I checked. And so if there was a problem with four city loop buses theoretically, what would we do? Would the city grind to a halt? Actually, no, we'd find four other buses to replace them immediately and it'd be fine. But councillor Cassidy didn't raise similar concerns when the Labor state government purchased buses from China. Remember Mark Bailey had this zero emission buses policy? And then he worked out that the local manufacturers actually couldn't meet the, the requirements of the policy. The local manufacturer said this is a silly policy, we could never actually deliver against your policy. And so even Mark Bailey then went to buy some buses from China. So to try and politicise this in the way that councillor Cassidy has done is not helpful. Now, moving on to other issues. First of all, as I always do, I want to talk about the lighting up of the council assets like the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge and other locations. Last night, those assets were lit up in blue to support National Asbestos Awareness Week, to raise awareness about asbestos-related diseases and encourage residents to protect themselves against exposure to asbestos. Tonight, those assets will be lit in orange to support the International Day of Elimination of Violence Against Women. Violence against women and girls remains one of the most widespread human rights abuses and the United Nations theme for 2025 is the digital realm, unite to end digital violence against women and girls. Violence against women online is a serious issue and rapidly growing and we support the campaign to end violence against women and girls. Tomorrow, our assets will be lit in blue and green to support the Australian PGA Championship, which is obviously being held here in Brisbane. On Thursday, the assets will be lit in orange again, this time to support Zonta's Say No to Violence Against Women initiative, which runs from the 25th of November to the 10th of December. On Friday, the assets will be lit up in yellow to support the PGA's fundraising event for Challenge, a charity devoted to supporting children and families living with cancer. And also, City Hall will be lit up on Friday night, red and green, for the lighting of the Christmas tree. And so if you can come to that, please do and we also hope for the best of weather, which is always a challenge at this time of year. It's been a couple of years where I've been standing there getting pelted with rain together with the crowd, but they still come out, they still come out, they love it. So let's hope for good weather on Friday night. Now, on Saturday, the assets will be lit in red, yellow and blue to celebrate Romania's National Day, celebrating the Great Union of Romania on the 1st of December 1918. I could also update everyone that the green bin rollout, thank you councillor Davis and your team, is now 96% complete and aiming for completion by the end of the week. And so suburbs receiving their green bin this week include Carrendale, Gumdale, Paddington, Ransom, Stafford, Stafford Heights and Tinglepa. And by the time the rollout is completed, more than 154,000 new green lid bins will have been distributed to Brisbane households. And so what is this all about? Two things, more recycling of green waste, which, you know, particularly at this time of year is a, a major thing, whether it's storm debris that's come down, whether it's the garden clippings, grass cuttings and hedge trimmings. There's a, there's a huge amount of green waste generated out of Brisbane because we are a green city and that's a wonderful thing. That diverts this out of landfill and it saves ratepayers money from the state government's bin tax or waste levy. And so it serves two important purposes and now, right across Brisbane, people have the opportunity to recycle more and save money for the long term. Item A and B relate to the proposed extension of the Queen Street Mall and they're linked to also the, the project of Cross River Rail that will deliver, together in partnership with us, a new precinct of mall. And so this is the most significant extension and expansion of the Queen Street Mall in over 15 years and it's a very exciting one and something that we're looking forward to seeing happen. First of it, a history in terms of the context that we're in. Queen Street Mall was first closed to general traffic, well, Queen Street was first closed to general traffic in 1981. It opened the following year in August, the 9th of August to be precise, as a mall and it was opened by Queen Elizabeth II. That was just the section between Albert Street and Elizabeth Street, so what we refer to as the bottom of the mall. The top of the mall was still a functioning street at this point in time. Later, in the lead-up to Expo 88, it was decided to expand the Queen Street Mall up to the top section of the mall. And so in time for Expo 88, the top section of Queen Street was closed to traffic all the way up to George Street and it became that section of mall that we know today. And so that was Expo 88. Also, in conjunction with that, the Queen Street Bus Station was built for Expo 88 and that was combined with the mall. Now, it's interesting because the bus station is a critical part of the success of the mall. If you look at the history of malls in the USA in particular, most of them failed. So people got into a big frenzy of closing down streets to create pedestrian malls and around 90% of them were a dismal failure and have reopened again for traffic. And so international research was done in what makes malls successful and there were two things that came out of it. Number one, there had to be high-density development around it, there had to be high-density activity zones. And so things to do, people living there, shops, restaurants, businesses, office buildings, the more people around the mall, the more successful it will be. That makes sense, doesn't it? The second thing that was critical for the success of any mall is good public transport access to the mall. So having the Queen Street Bus Station underneath the mall is a key part of its success, just like having busways running out through the inner northern busway and a King George Square Bus Station. Having a ferry terminal right up at North Quay, close to the top of the mall, is important. And now, having a new train station on Adelaide Street will also be important and will help enliven a section of the city. Progressing forward, I talked about Expo 88. In 2006, Brisbane Square, the office building where council is located, opened up and that came with the creation of Reddick Cliff Place at the top of the mall. And so a new public square was created there. In 2008, the mall was extended along Albert Street towards City Hall here, so that section where Wendy's is now located on the corner. Did I mention Wendy's? Wendy's, so the section between Hungry Jack's and Wendy's was opened in 2008. And today, we welcome the most significant expansion of the mall in more than 15 years. And so what we'll see is the Albert Street precinct progressively opened up in stages as a pedestrian mall. Stage one gets underway this month when two new footpath dining sections will open between Elizabeth Street and Charlotte Street. The remaining expansion will follow over the coming months, including retail dining activations between Elizabeth and Charlotte Street and a final stage between Charlotte and Mary Streets. Staged opening form part of the new public plaza being delivered outside the new Albert Street Underground Station.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Moved for an extension, Madam Chair?
Seconded. Has been moved for an extension by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by councillor Dixon. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor?
And so expanding the mall, I think, will be a great thing, but also going back to that principle of having high activity around it, lots of things going on, high-density development, which obviously the CBD is, but also having great public transport access. This new station will help ensure that the extended part of the mall on Albert Street will be successful. There will be thousands of people coming out of that station each and every day, 70,000 a day apparently, and that will help create a really vibrant bustling precinct, which will be wonderful to see. And so this is all part of the evolution of Brisbane's CBD. And, you know, Queen Street Mall has been one of the great success stories when it comes to malls. It continues to evolve, it's been expanded over the years, it's gone through good times and more challenging times, particularly during Covid, where no one was in the mall. And we see the life coming back to the city as well and the life coming back to the mall and that's a wonderful thing. So this extension of the mall down Albert Street is a positive thing and we've been working together with the Queensland Government to make that happen. Item B is also related to this and this is a minor amendment to the city plan proposing to update the instrument and promote proposed malls in the Brisbane local government area. And so from a planning point of view, this effectively enables the first, or us to manage the mall in the same way that we do for the existing sections of Queen Street Mall. And so we have to extend that management ability through the City of Brisbane regulation. The mapping is also being updated to include our existing malls in Fortitude Valley, the Chinatown Valley malls. We're required to include these malls in the city plan under the City of Brisbane regulation. While references to existing malls are made in the city plan, having maps contained in one location... one location helps us better reflect those requirements. And so this is effectively about enabling us to deliver a high standard of service in the mall, to enforce local laws in the mall as we do at the moment, to keep it clean, to keep it safe for people and to make sure it is part of that inner-city malls network. And so I commend these two items to the chamber.
Councillor Cassidy, your misrepresentation.
Thanks very much, Chair. I asked what was a very simple fact-based question and councillor Wines had represented council at a transport forum. And so my question was whether he had raised cybersecurity concerns and the Lord Mayor inferred my question was about anything and everything other than cybersecurity concerns and I take great offence at that.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Chair. On these items A and B, I'll talk of them concurrently but touch on B a little bit more specifically at the end. What we have, as we know, before us is an extension of the Queen Street Mall essentially, even though it's the Albert Street Mall, pedestrian mall along Albert Street between Elizabeth and Mary Street. Nothing new, of course, you know, there was the media announcement last week, but in fact, the announcement was made back in 2018, 2019, from memory. So another déjà vu moment here in this chamber after last week's announcement, last decade's announcement about this. Yeah, so for many years, we knew the design, including the long mooted green spine was always part of the Albert Street Station concepts in the Cross River Rail project. Oh, I was pausing for the guffaws and laughs and groans when I mentioned the word Cross River Rail, because that's what we got two weeks ago when I brought that up in the chamber, the LNP were carrying on and calling out and laughing and, but apparently not when it comes to getting a free mall out of the state Labor government, well, the former state Labor government. A great Labor project, Cross River Rail, and the mall a great Labor project as well. A Commonwealth Games legacy, I think Roy Harvey was the mayor at that point in time, I think when the, I could be wrong, I'm standing, be corrected on that. So great, initiating the mall, as the Lord Mayor said, back in the early 1980s, a great Labor legacy and we've seen the fruits of that work and that forward planning from a Labor council and we've seen, we will see the fruits of that work and forward planning from a Labor state government as well when this asset is handed over to council as well. So I guess at least all parties can agree this is a good idea as well in expanding these pedestrian areas and something that Labor councillors on this side of the chamber called for as far back as 2018 as well, to get involved in the planning around the extension of the mall in this section of Albert Street and beyond as well, and creating a green spine from the city botanic gardens all the way through to the Roma Street Parklands, crossing through what will be three major transport hubs as well as an expanding city centre down there. A lot of this discussion arose back then in 2018 around pedestrian movement in that section of the city and pedestrian safety after a number of pedestrians were struck and killed and council had its Move Safe survey, those of us who are here remember that. And a lot of the pins that people dropped with those intersections along Albert Street and the movement of people getting up and down that spine of the city, they found it incredibly frustrating and unsafe to do so there. What council did was install scramble crossings, which made it quicker to get to the diagonal side of an intersection, but took longer to get across. So if you're walking down Albert Street, it in fact takes longer than it used to. Frustrations rise and that's why we see a lot of people cross outside of pedestrian at times. So extending, pedestrianising Albert Street is a great thing and it'd be a very good thing for our city and for people who come here and enjoy the city outside of those who just live here as well. The amendment package claims that public realm upgrades will be made to deliver, apparently council's Albert Street vision. I guess it's an easy thing to have a vision on when you're not really delivering it. But we hope that the Lord Mayor has been on the phone, how they used to describe him, big-money Bart, hope he got on the phone to him and Mark Bailey and said, thanks for this forward planning, thank you for handing it, I suspect not, maybe they texted, I'm not sure. But the construction on what will be handed over began in July 24, being staged to maintain access to pedestrians and local businesses, as we have heard. So after all of the handbacks in those stages through to December 25, and then next year we probably expect in March and September to see this announcement rehashed by the LNP, they'll probably go and announce it two more times, I suspect, and maybe they'll take a ribbon down and cut it there as well. We know, or some LNP councillors used to do, they used to turn up to places with their own ribbons and cut them even if they weren't invited there. They're gone though, they're gone, so maybe they won't do that. Yeah, we do wonder though, I guess, if the pedestrians who are using the Albert Street end of the Queen Street Mall will also enjoy the Orwellian blastings from council's public address systems as well as they're watching people as they move and the cameras are moving around and watching people what they do there. Managing Albert Street section of the Queen Street Mall is expected to support outdoor dining, entertainment and cultural activations, as we read here, and an economic uplift for local trade. And as we know, the, again, going back to the huge success that the Queen Street Mall has been over a 40-year period now here in Brisbane, we hope that, we hope that is the case down there. On clause B specifically, there, there's some, there's some points that I think are important. If we're going to enjoy a genuinely enjoyable place for people, we do need some guarantees around what that space will be. So it's going to be handed back to council. There must be shade trees, heat mitigation standards in line with council's own climate resilience goals. They must be included, including accessible design for people with disabilities, older residents and families with prams. This is a section being held back in, they're being handed back in stages. There needs to be some, we want to know what the Lord Mayor's long-term vision is for expanding this work as well. You know, he's got a huge gift here and as he said, his LNP regime has been sitting, he admitted, they've been sitting on their hands for the last 15 years, doing nothing around expanding the pedestrianisation of the inner city, he admitted that. And it's taken the former state Labor government to do a project to hand over to council to see an improvement in pedestrianisation of our city. So what is next? What is next for the city? What is the Lord Mayor's vision going forward as well? Because there are some challenges despite us getting this great new asset. We know that, you know, during summer, places like the Queen Street Mall, like King George Square, that's largely treated as an extension, as a pedestrian space. And now this section of Albert Street, if people want to come in summer and sit and relax, we don't want to see people shopping till they drop literally through heat exhaustion. We need to be thinking about those things. And weekends in the city particularly are very quiet and we hear these sort of overall numbers and I believe councillor Allen often says, the mall's at something like 80% of the foot traffic of what it was pre-Covid. So take, think about that for a second, the mall has about 80% of the volume of pedestrians that it did back in, up to the end of 2019 and yet Brisbane's population is hundreds of thousands of people bigger. So there's less people coming to enjoy these spaces and on weekends, it's less again. So the point the Lord Mayor said around just having density in these places attracts people, it seems in fact it is more about attracting people from, who don't live specifically in these places, to come and use them. Now, if you were coming to the city on a weekend and looking for somewhere to sit and relax, King George, the frying pan that King George Square is, is not a place you would do that. As you wander around a quiet and dead city, there's not a lot of nice, cool places you can sit in the Queen Street Mall at the moment and take 15 minutes or half an hour. So there's an opportunity here where we get back from the state government to ensure that what we are delivering for the people of Brisbane actually meets council's own guidelines around that. And we have some vision from the Lord Mayor as to what is next, because as he keeps saying, 600 people a week moving to Brisbane, talks about a housing plan that is going to take, as we've learnt today in Kirilpa, another six years to see any units delivered there. What is the piece around livability? We have this amazing world-class asset sitting in the middle of the city that quite clearly this 22-year-old LNP regime has no vision for and has no plans for the future around. So thank you to the former state Labor government for delivering this amazing piece of infrastructure and handing it over to council and thanks to those visionary Labor councillors and Labor Lord Mayors who planned all this work 40 years ago to, to at least for us to have the bones of a great livable city, even though we're badly let down by the LNP.
Further speakers, councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item A and B. Firstly, item A, the proposed extension of the Queen Street Mall. As I mentioned last week in the chamber, we are looking forward to seeing Albert Street open up through a number of stages to become a walkable spine for residents and visitors to enjoy. As we know, Albert Street has been undergoing a major transformation as part of the Queensland Government's Cross River Rail project for the last few years, which will include the new underground station in Albert Street, which will be a great addition to the city. Now, stage one will be delivered in December of this year and it includes two new footpath dining sections that will open between Elizabeth Street and Charlotte Street, offering fresh spaces for outdoor dining and entertainment. These spaces in particular will be located outside Café Mondial at the Elizabeth Street end and outside Gilhoolies at the Charlotte Street end. Look, I would note that while the Cross River Rail project has been underway, it has impacted the trade of those particular businesses, so I'm delighted to see them, you know, basically having trouble-free access to their footpaths. Stage two will commence early next year and includes the remainder of the area between Elizabeth Street and Charlotte Street and that'll create a great sort of pedestrian hub between Elizabeth Street and Charlotte Street, which will support retail dining and activations. And as the Lord Mayor mentioned, stage three will be delivered late next year and will be the section between Charlotte and Mary Streets. The submission in question also includes the Queen Street Mall boundaries to be extended 10 metres along George and Edward Streets to ensure consistent management and activation. As the Lord Mayor mentioned, this is 15 years since, so we last had an extension on Queen Street Mall and I'm sure local businesses will be delighted, as will councillor Howard. Now, this project will effectively provide another link between a great green spine walk between Roma Street Parkland and the city botanic gardens. And I think this dates back, the vision of a green spine dates back to about the city plan in 2014. So this has been an aspiration of council's for some time now. The Queen Street Mall in particular remains the most popular pedestrian mall in Australia. We get about 220,000 movements through the mall each month. The new Albert Street Station is expected to add to that in a significant way. I've heard figures of 70,000 mentioned, so that's a very significant boost in foot traffic. And along with the normal activity in Queen Street Mall, we've got a number of projects underway that will continue to support activity in the mall. Firstly, Griffith University has, is converting the heritage-listed Treasury Building into a new CBD campus for 2027. The international hotel chain Intercontinental Group has taken over the Hilton and will be doing a refurbishment programme down there. ISPT, who own the Winter Garden, are doing a redevelopment down there, which will also add to the vibrancy of that end of the mall. We've got Charter Hall building, a commercial building at the George Street end of Queen Street Mall and of course, the earmarked revitalisation of Uptown, which is the old Maya Centre. So there's a lot going on in Queen Street Mall and Albert Street. It is a key economic driver in the city and it's a must-visit destination for locals and visitors alike. We are expecting with the increased number of people working, shopping, studying and living in the city, that the Queen Street Mall will continue to go from strength to strength. So we're very excited about the new Albert Street addition to Queen Street Mall and what this means for our residents. Now, moving on to item B, this is the minor amendment to city plan to reflect the existing locations of our current and proposed malls. We're required under the City of Brisbane Regulation to ensure that we are including all existing and proposed malls in the local government area in our city plan and that's exactly what we're doing with this particular amendment. We are also taking the opportunity to explicitly reflect the mapping of the Chinatown Mall and the Valley Mall in the city plan, so important amendments to city plan. Now, I'm glad to hear councillor Cassidy is supporting this particular submission and I think that it will be a truly wonderful addition to the city and to Queen Street Mall. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further speakers to items A and B, councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. Just with respect to items A and B, I read this with a degree of scepticism, I guess, but there's a couple of issues that I would like to put on the agenda. Obviously, we're inheriting two sections of Albert Street that are being returned from the state government as part of the Cross River Rail project that clearly the, I agree with councillor Cassidy on this, the LNP administration have derided over and over and over again, yet here's a benefit coming back to the council, but we're not hearing a lot of praise, but not my, at no cost, not my issue. My issue to start with is, I read with great interest that the public realm improvements being made to Queensland's premier retail destination, not sure I'd call the Queen Street Mall Queensland's premier retail destination, will help realise council's Albert Street vision to transform Albert Street into a green spine, linking Roma Street Parklands with King George Square and the city botanic garden. I have just one question rhetorically for the Lord Mayor, Madam Chairman, through you or chairperson through you, how many trees are being planted as part of this new green spine? And if council's not planting any trees, how many trees are we inheriting to manage as part of this new green spine? Because a green spine, I was very surprised to hear there was such a thing. Certainly, you can't tell from King George Square that there's a green spine and if you walk down to Roma Street, certainly doesn't appear that there's a green spine. So I'm interested in how this green spine's going to appear. We're going to paint green paint on the footpath? Are we going to put down astroturf? Are we going to install green billboards with billboard signage that's green? Like, green spine could mean many things under this administration. Are all the directional signs going to be green? Is there any chance that we're actually going to get some vegetation in this area? That's what I'd like to know. It's a very simple question. If we're inheriting all of this, presumably council has been in discussion with the state government about what's coming, presumably they're well aware of what we're inheriting. But I would like to know what the Lord Mayor is doing as part of council's policy to deliver on the green spine. And that is whether council is doing anything on the trees. So that's the first issue I've got because green spine, it was, it was, it was very entertaining. I, this, you know, the other thing that was very sad, to be honest, you know, because obviously I'm in the city on a regular basis, the state of the Brisbane Queen Street Mall is really, really sad at the moment and it is awful to see what's happened at the southern end of the mall now that Maya have left. It is really sad, I think, to see how, yeah, Uptown still does not have an identity. Brisbane City Council has removed a number of the tenancies, that tends to be council's way of activating spaces is to allow commercial developments on these malls. That's just about revenue raising and money. The, King George Square's a disaster and always has been as long as I've been here. The attempt to rectify it was awful, those trees have barely grown in 15 years. So I don't think we're actually delivering against the vision that we say we're delivering against. I don't see new green spaces going into the mall anywhere, anywhere. I see old buildings being docked down and then new structures being built. So I would really like the Lord Mayor to explain how, how he is delivering against this green spine, unless, you know, anything can pop up and tell me painting everything green, sure, that's fine, be happy to hear it. But footpath dining, to me, indicates that there's going to be a lot of commercial space that won't even be accessible to pedestrians and that is my second issue. Obviously, based on this, we are converting significant parts are converting significant parts of Albert Street in those two blocks to mall space. Now, how that mall space is being used is the question, and there's no information in this report before us today about how it's going to be allocated.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Howard.
Thank you, madam chair. I rise to speak on item A and B. Item A is the proposed extensions of the Queen Street Mall, and item B, the city plan minor amendment malls locations. Chair, this is a really exciting moment for our city. As we've heard, for the first time in fifteen years, we're expanding the Queen Street Mall, Queensland's premier retail destination. This isn't just about adding a few metres of pavement, it's about making our city heart bigger, better and more connected. The revitalised Albert Street precinct will strengthen the connection between Queen Street Mall and Brisbane's green spine, creating an even more seamless link from Roma Street Parkland to the City Botanic Gardens. It's about enhancing what people already love about our city centre and making it easier to enjoy Brisbane's subtropical lifestyle. And what will people find when they get there? They'll find new public spaces to relax and enjoy, outdoor dining that celebrates our subtropical lifestyle, and cultural activations that bring life and vibrancy to the CBD. The handback from the Queensland Government starts next month with two new footpath dining sections, then more stages through 2026. And we're extending the mall boundaries along George and Edward Streets to make sure activation and management are consistent. And why does this matter? Well, we heard councillor Allen say that the Queen Street Mall already attracts more than 230,000 pedestrian movements every single day. This expansion, oh, every month? Oh, okay, thank you, through you, madam chair. I'll take that interjection, given that I thought that it was every single day. That is a lot. This expansion will boost that even further, supporting local businesses and creating a stronger economy for our city. It builds on the Shriner Council's proven track record of delivering iconic lifestyle precincts like Howard Smith Wharf, South Bank and Fish Lane, and it aligns perfectly with our Albert Street vision and the city shaping priorities ahead of the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games. This is about creating a CBD that locals are proud of and visitors love, a city centre that is vibrant, connected and welcoming, because that is what Brisbane is all about. So I recommend item A to the chamber and move to item B, which is the city plan minor amendment malls locations. Now, madam chair, this amendment is about keeping our city planning framework up to date as Brisbane continues to grow and evolve. Our malls are iconic spaces that showcase Brisbane's lifestyle and connect people to the heart of our city. Making sure these locations are accurately reflected in the city plan is part of delivering a well-managed, vibrant city centre. As we look ahead to the exciting changes in Albert Street and the Queen Street Mall precinct, this update ensures we're ready for the next chapter in Brisbane's story. It's another example of how the Shriner Council is planning ahead and getting the details right so our city can shine, and I recommend item B to the chamber.
Further speakers, councillor Chongwa.
Thank you, chair. I rise to speak on clause A, a proposed extension to the Queen Street Mall. While I support the idea of a mall, this is an opportunity to be more sustainable and resilient for our city and community. I refer to our King George Square, which is hot and grey, the frying pan, as councillor Jared Cassidy said. This LNP council is quick to pave over our city. They demonstrate it daily with their refusal to incorporate genuine sustainability and resiliency measures to mitigate against urban heat island effect and climate change. This mall extension is a great chance to use this area to create a park with accessible pathways and plant more trees to enhance tree canopy. I reviewed the Albert Street vision, creating the green spine. It looks like a nice glossy brochure, but we know the LNP are great at greenwashing. This doesn't mean it's going to be a genuine green space with large tree canopy and some green space. In fact, many of the green blobs in the concept plans look like they are shade sales and nothing to do with a green spine. We need to expand our green space at every opportunity, and our inner city is going to feel the increased heatwaves of climate change. I refer to 2019 peer-reviewed study in the International Journal of Climatology that investigated the impact of urban growth and climate change on heat stress during summer in Brisbane. From 2019 to 2050, they focused on the urban heat island effect, where heat from direct sunlight is absorbed by concrete, pavers and other heat, sorry, high heat absorption materials, raising local temperatures. It found temperature increases from climate change and urban growth will see Brisbane experience forty-eight dangerously hot nights and one to two days at forty degrees Celsius per summer in sixteen years. Thousands of Brisbane residents will be at risk of dying from extreme heat every summer. To quote Dr Sarah Chapman, one of the researchers, when we include urban growth, the number of hot nights increased even further. With a doubling of hot nights, more people will be at risk of illness and death. Extreme heat is one of the most direct results of climate pollution. It is also one of the most harmful, and more Australians dying as a result of heatwaves since 1890, then from floods, bushfires and all other climate fuel disasters combined. Extreme heat harms our health, our livelihoods and our economy. We've known about the urban heat island effect for years, and we know how to protect against it. Planting more trees, expanding our green space, finding opportunities to create more green space and creating biodiversity corridors around our city should be part of our urban planning design. We are not seeing any of these opportunities being taken up by this LNP council, far from it. LNP are turning our city concrete grey to an unsustainable city. It's to be expected from a bunch of climate deniers that don't accept science, a party that doesn't act on the climate science. We are building an unlivable city for our children. According to the Climate Council, Australia's mortality data indicates that over the past four decades, there has been a steady increase in the number of deaths in summer compared to those in winter, suggesting that climate change-induced heat may already be affecting mortality rates. We must take urgent steps to improve the preparedness for long-term resilience for our communities to minimise the impacts of worsening extreme heat. Creating a park in Albert Street would mitigate against urban heat island effect by replacing heat-absorbing surfaces with vegetation that provides shade and cooling through evaporation transpiration. This vision replaces pavement and concrete with plants with cool and low cool environment through shade and moisture release, helping lower both surface and ambient temperatures. This would be moving towards creating a sustainable and resilient city for our community. Let's listen to the climate scientists like Dr Sarah Chapman, who say, and I quote, "Getting rid of green space means increasing the temperatures, not just in the city, but surrounding areas. So the amount of green space in the city is a very important factor in urban temperatures. Let's make this mall into a thriving, vibrant green space to help cool our city down and protect our community."
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Adams.
Thank you, madam chair. I rise to speak on item A, and I am absolutely gobsmacked that we can get a lecture on climate change from an item around the expansion of one of the most popular malls in Australia, the Queen Street Mall, and now into Albert Street Mall. I had to stand today to speak.
One moment, please, though, councillor Adams, because councillor Griffiths is rudely calling out across the chamber. So caution you, councillor. Councillor Adams.
Thank you. I know what councillor Griffith loves when I stand up to speak, madam chair. He just can't resist.
I'm cautioning you for the third time, councillor Griffiths. It is not appropriate behaviour. Councillor Adams.
Thank you, madam chair. I need you to stand to talk about the Queen Street Mall, the success it is and how the expansion is going to make Brisbane even more livable city. We heard a lot of reinvented stories from councillor Cassidy and those opposite around where the ideas and the vision come from. Well, I can tell you that this administration, who has been here for many years, has driven this vision from as far back as 2013, when we started with the Ideas Fiesta for the City Centre Master Plan in 2013, years before the consideration for an event as successful, as monumental as the Olympics was considered. In those days, we actually closed Albert Street, it was before your time as well, councillor Allen. We closed Albert Street and we had a festival over a weekend where we had chairs to share and astroturf out at the time, because, believe it or not, councillor Chongwa, through you, madam chair, ripping up the bitumen and putting down grass is not what we're planning to do. And ironically, there used to be a Greens councillor here that said putting down grass was a colonial construct brought in here by the First Fleet. So as long as we don't mow it, then we might be right. But talking about King George Square and it being an unsuccessful space is a lot of hogwash. Thank goodness they are not environmental engineers, because I tell you what, you can't plant trees any larger on a space that has a bus tunnel that goes underneath it. And guess what is going underneath Albert Street? A train tunnel as well. So there will be green spaces, there will be open spaces, there will be cool spaces, but there will not be large forests of trees that will be going down the mall, but it will be as beautiful and planted and green as our Queen Street Mall, particularly the northern end of the Queen Street Mall. I challenge any of you to come in on the weekend, as I do regularly, to shop in the mall and tell me it is not the busiest place in the city. Saturday after Saturday, and expanding these opportunities to Albert Street is going to be spectacular. And we heard that from thousands of people in 2013, and we've been working through that, and we heard it again when we went out for our big ideas as we were launching into the opportunities for the Olympics just five years ago. Extending the mall is going to improve the walkability, the public access, and that greenspine has been a long part of the vision of Team Quirk and now Team Shriner for connecting the Botanic Gardens right through up to Roma Street, and now even further across to Victoria Park, since Victoria Park is now a public park. Thank you, Lord Mayor Adrian Shriner, in greening the centre of the city. I heard scoffs about the premier retail destination. Of course, it is the premier retail destination. I say again, you only need to come in on the weekends to see the people that are actually voting with their feet and definitely with their credit cards, day in and day out, Friday night, Saturday, Sunday. And again, for councillor Johnston, through you, madam chair, to say greenspine, never heard of it. It came through this council mall multiple, multiple times. But that's what we expect from the mudslingers on the other side. Don't remember the good stuff and just hope something sticks when they make it up as they go along. And as for the Queen Street Mall being sad, again, it kind of makes me glad that I'm still not the Economic Development Chair, listening to those people putting our city down, day in and day out. The Queen Street Mall is a striking example of a subtropical mall, and you could ask any visitor, resident or overseas that comes through, what they think. Uptown at the moment is very disappointing. But that is not in control of the council. We are talking about the mall and the mall space as well. Our mall is an outstanding space. It is the most popular mall by pedestrians, in Australians, in Australia. It does have loudspeakers to make sure that we keep it under control. We've cancelled smoking, we've cancelled skateboarding in our town to make it a more livable area. And the extension into Albert Street to increase that activation, the retail and the walkability is going to be outstanding.
Councillor Adams, your time has expired. And I do remind councillors to try and follow suitable behaviour while other councillors are delivering their speeches. Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, madam chair. I rise to speak about the extension of the Queen Street Mall into Albert through to Mary Street over the next few years. And I have a special place in my heart for the CBD. I managed four stores over probably about fifteen years, Adelaide Street, Albert Street, George Street and Elizabeth Street, large and small. As a matter of fact, the last one was where Brisbane Square is now, what used to be there. But and so I've seen the retail, I've seen retail and the services in the city increase over the years. And but what's concerned me, I've had over the last, well, this session anyways, I've had a look around the city a little bit, and there is, I think the city is quite, in some areas is struggling for occupancy, right, which is sad to see any shop boarded up or not occupied. It says a little bit about, you know, the premier, not my words, the premier retail area of the city or of Brisbane. If I have a look out in the suburbs and the shopping centres out there, they seem to do a lot better way of, it seems to be a lot better mix, right, variety or mixes, as they say in the trade. And there seems to be, I mean, if you look at Interfaith Shopping Town or Mount Ominy or Garden City, there is very few stores that are not occupied. And so I think we have spent a lot of money with Brisbane marketing over the years, right, tens of millions of dollars, since I've been in this place since 2016. To what benefit, I really look around the Queen Street Mall, and it does look a bit tired. You know, it's a fair age. Albert Street, obviously, will look brand new when it's all established. And I just, and the other thing, the other thing, of course, is, you know, we're here on a Tuesday, so sometimes we go to dinner and sometimes we go out and look for a restaurant to get a quick meal and get back, and it's a little bit of a struggle to actually find one, or a variety of them, over the last few years. Now, I know COVID had an impact on occupancy, and it hasn't quite recovered. But when you think about it, the amount of people that actually live in this city, live in the CBD area now, compared to what it was back in the good old, bad old days of the seventies and the eighties, right, it's tens of thousands or more people that actually live in the city. So there should be, there should be a very vibrant vibrancy to the malls, right, and to the areas that are not part of the mall. Certainly, on Saturday, the mall is hopping, right, but those other areas of the city that have retail aren't doing as well, right, and they're paying the same, and they're paying, and in some cases, they're paying the same occupancy rates as well per square metre. So I think we, as a council, there was a big blow that happened when the Myers moved out that we, that the city hasn't addressed yet. And I understand that, of course, we don't have control over the owner of the Uptown and what they're doing up there. But gee, you know, we are the leaders in this city, you know, the city council is the leader in the city. So we have big skin in the game, and we just have to twist every arm, whatever we can do to try to get the occupancy back up, get the vibrancy back into the city on a regular basis, you know, every day of the week and peak times on the weekend, especially Sundays, when people do have some time to come into the city and the parking's very reasonable, right, so why aren't they coming in? And the people that are actually living in the city, where are they shopping if they're not shopping in the city? Where are they going to? And why are they going there? Right? When was the last time we did a survey to find out why people are not necessarily shopping in the city for things that, maybe things that they can't get? And maybe that would be very important. So, you know, I'm an old retailer, and I love retail, I love being part of the retail scene when I was working in it, and I love talking retail with any retailer that would, that want to open up a conversation when I'm buying something. And so I just encourage this Brisbane City Council, through Brisbane marketing, to try to do everything they can to increase the occupancy and the vibrancy of the malls, as well as the rest of the city, right through to the valley. Thank you, chair.
Further speakers. Councillor Massey.
Thank you, chair. I rise to speak on item A today, and I'll start by stating that, look, none of us can pretend that the LNP council doesn't have a history of turning green into grey. The prime example of that, of course, is King George Square, and I say this as someone who has very, very fond memories of being a teenager and coming in and hanging out with my mates and my friends in King George Square, and how shocked I was at that young age when it got turned into the grey slate, obviously, so that that area could be hired. Another example that recently comes to memory is also that little park. Another example that recently comes to memory is also that little park in the Five Ways in the Fortitude Valley. There was a consultation, I believe, from memory recently in that area and that leaflet, I remember it in my head, had all this stuff about, you know, enough lip to that park that was completely asphalted. And it had lots of little grey, like shrubs and trees. And I think recently I saw a picture of that area and there was two trees. There was no shrubs, there was nothing. So there is a history of complete graying from the LMP. And, you know, when we read these documents, what's really important is that, like, on this side, we're saying, yeah, green it, do your best. We want, we want a Green Spine, we want trees in the city. We want pedestrians, we want active travel users, active transport users to have the safest alternatives and a good alternative not on the road. The challenge is that we don't believe you. And the challenge related to that non-belief is because there is history showing, today in the past, potentially in the future, we will see that the LMP administration historically grays green spaces, right? Not only grays them, gets rid of them. There are multiple green spaces in the Gabber Ward that have never been allocated historically. I mean, I could talk very quickly about Riverside Drive, which was never completed. The closure of those areas, that area being incredibly important for green space in that area that was said by this council under this administration would be closed, noting that Riverside Drive, what is closed before Hawking Street, has been a great success. Like, we are seeing over and over where there are some examples that this council decides to be people first, that it is successful, that people are using these areas, they're valuing it, they're finding really safe active transport ways, pedestrians are safe and pedestrians have more to do. And expanding the Mall is important because, like, I mean, I'm in the, I'm here on the weekends a lot too, more than I expect, not for shopping, but there's a little protest on, on the weekend. There's a lot of protests on, on the weekend, I'll say that out loud. It's real hot. I'll take, through you, Chair, I'll take that interjection. It's so hot in King George Square. It is so hot in King George Square when we're standing there till clock.
Sorry, Councillor Massey, councillor Griffiths, your point of order?
I just heard councillor Adams yell out across the chamber. When I yell out across the chamber, I get warned.
You did and as I was, no, as I was turning my mic, if you were paying attention, thank you councillor Griffiths, I'm speaking.
You don't ever do anything with the LMP councillors.
I'm speaking.
And I'm making a point.
And I'm going to make a point.
You do.
That you're not paying attention because as I turned my mic on and went to say something, councillor Massey actually said, 'No, I will take that.' So I allowed it. But if you are watching, you would know that.
You still are not warning her.
Thank you councillor Griffiths.
You're not following the rules.
Thank you councillor Griffiths.
You're not consistent, you're not warning her. I'm just putting on the record that you are unfair with your rules.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
So Madam Chairman, I'd just like to get the rule right so I don't breach it, I don't think it's unreasonable. So if we don't accept an interjection from the other side of the chamber, then you will take action against them for breaching the meeting's local law. Is that your new ruling today? If the speaker does accept the interjection, you will not warn them.
I can tell you councillor, councillor Johnston, are you finished? I am not making any new ruling, but I am actually the one running the chamber and I don't need to tell you of any new ruling. Thank you. Councillor Massey, please, sorry about the interruption, please continue.
It is hot, it is very hot in King George Square. Oh gosh, I mean, I could go on, couldn't I? The times that I got sunburnt in there. But the point I'm trying to make is, we want an expansion, we want more places for pedestrians, we want spaces that are active because, like, we've all been into the city, it's not as busy or as vibrant as we would like to say. Obviously, people, there's a lot of workforce in here, which is why there is a huge population that comes here and more people live in the city than they have previously. But it isn't as vibrant as it used to, so activation is good. But let's do a property. How many trees? How many trees? I heard earlier through you, Chair, through that, you know, you couldn't plant deeply, yet we have trees on the side of the street. If we're taking over the road, how many trees are we going to plant? How do we make sure that a Green Spine isn't just words but actual reality? Because there are incomplete projects across the city, incomplete projects across the city, including on Riverside Drive, including on the full closure of Riverside Drive. And just before I finish, speaking of Riverside Drive, something that affects it, I'd like to submit this document to the public record, table it to the public record.
Thank you councillor Massey, your time's expired. Are there any further speakers? Any further speakers councillor Griffiths?
Yep, no one from the LMP side, it's very interesting. I wanted to speak on this item in relation to words versus actions. And what we've heard in this debate is a whole lot of words and a whole lot of concepts, but once again, we don't see that the words and the actions match up. I think a lot of people on this side of the chamber have heard the word Green Spine, but the LMP haven't been able to match it up with any action. In fact, we had them falling over each other, contradicting each other. Councillor Adams just said, 'Don't be stupid, can't put trees in.'
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order councillor Adams.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I note your claim of misrepresentation. Councillor Griffiths?
Don't be stupid, we can't put trees in. We've got a tunnel and a bus station underneath us. We had the Lord Mayor talk about a Green Spine going through the city, but he hasn't been able to give us any facts on what a Green Spine means. In fact, their concept of green equals King George Square and we know King George Square ain't anything green. I find it really interesting because we keep saying this language, not we, the LMP, the Lord Mayor and his little LMP team, keep saying the words and the words just, and the actions don't match up. So here we talk about this green space, they haven't been able to support it with green actions. In fact, I heard one of the Liberal LMP councillors over there actually say, 'Go, if you want trees and forests, go out to the suburbs.' That was a quote, 'Go out to the suburbs.' Well, I was out in the suburbs this morning at Kemmoor and there's 174 mature gum trees that are koala habitat that this LMP voted to demolish out there. 174 mature ones, let alone all the smaller ones. So Yawarra Street, Kemmoor. And they voted to demolish, they voted, they wanted, they agreed to demolish those trees last week in this meeting. So you can't have it one way and say, 'We're going to do a Green Spine in the Queen Street Mall, but we can't tell you how many trees we're planting.' And then have a huge block of land, a huge tract of land with 174 mature, beautiful trees that are koala habitat, prime koala habitat, that you're going to allow to be cleared to make 11 house blocks. How's this add up? And then, then we hear in this chamber that the LMP are carbon neutral? What a load of bollocks. It's one thing after the other, after the other. Look at what we say, don't look at what we do. And this is the same for this. This is exactly the same for this. It's spin and rubbish. And I really think it's great that councillor Adams is here every weekend, every weekend shopping and drinking and eating and having a good time.
Point of order, Madam Chair. One moment councillor Griffiths.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I know your claim, I note your claim councillor Adams.
Anyway, whatever councillor Adams doesn't do, that's fine.
Griffiths?
Through you, Madam Chair, but I do know she's not in a ward when we do a door knock there. And I do know people had so many complaints about things they couldn't get done.
Councillor Griffiths, that is not in the report, go back to the report, please.
I'm just talking about councillor Adams's weekend, it was in, you didn't object to that, Madam Chair. She spoke about it, I'm just bringing it back to what councillor Adams was talking about.
No councillor.
Yeah, here we go.
Stick to the report.
Oh yeah, it's just showing up, one side gets to say something and the other side doesn't. I think what we have here is a con job. And not a con job about the Mall, but a con job about actually being genuinely green and genuinely interested in our environment and genuinely wanting to make our city better. Thank you.
Councillor Adams, you have two, at least two points of misrepresentation.
Yeah, there was a third one probably and a second one. First one was that councillor Griffiths said, I said, 'Don't be stupid, you can't plant trees.' So I didn't say, 'You don't be stupid' and I didn't say, 'You can't plant trees.' I said, 'You couldn't do deep planting over tunnels and there will be a tunnel in part of Albert Street.' And the second one was, he screamed loudly repeatedly that I'm in here every weekend, every weekend, every weekend shopping, which I'm not, but then added in drinking, which I found highly offensive, and asked him to withdraw.
Councillor Griffiths, will you withdraw that accusation?
I'm happy to withdraw that she drinks, councillor Adams drinks and eats on the
Well, that's a reflection on you. Any further speakers? No further speakers? Councillor, sorry, Lord Mayor.
Thank you.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. Councillor Griffiths and councillor Johnston, I caution you for calling out inappropriately, Charles, thank you, for, councillor Strunk, thank you for admitting that. I'll caution you both. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, we've heard some fascinating contributions today and an incredible rewriting of history here from opposition councillors. Incredibly sort of one-eyed contributions that have been made. Councillor Cassidy in particular wax lyrical about the new section of Mall as though it was the best thing since sliced bread. And hey, it's going to be a positive thing, one of so many positive things that have happened in the city. He suggested that somehow nothing else has happened in the CBD in 15 years. I said it was the most important expansion of the Mall in 15 years, but councillor Cassidy forgot a few things. So let me remind you of what he forgot. The giant tunnel that was built underneath Adelaide Street that took buses under, off the surface road, making a more pleasant place for pedestrians and cyclists and put them underground. He forgot the pedestrianisation and expansion of the footpaths and decluttering of Adelaide Street that happened together with that project. Remember, Brisbane Metro, a project that he opposes to this day. The tunnel, a project he criticised. He forgot the big bridge, Kangaroo Point Bridge, that brings thousands of people into the CBD each day, not by car, but by bike, on foot, on e-scooter, and has really helped enliven another section of the CBD. He forgot the creation of the Citylink cycleway, which created a continuous cycleway all the way from South Brisbane across the Victoria Bridge, round through Elizabeth Street, up Edward Street and to the Kangaroo Point Bridge. He forgot about that one too. He also forgot about the pedestrian expansions on Edward Street that we have done as well. He forgot about the introduction of a CBD 40k an hour speed limit, which we did, to improve safety for pedestrians and cyclists, which it has, it absolutely has. He forgot about the introduction of pedestrian countdown timers on all traffic signals to make it safer for pedestrians. Forgot about the introduction of scrambled crossings right across the CBD. He complains about the city loop bus that we provide because there's Chinese-made buses there, so he doesn't like that one either. He forgot about the creation of Howard Smith Wharves, the best thing to happen to the inner city of Brisbane arguably in decades, something that Labour actively opposed, actively opposed. They voted against it, they opposed it, they campaigned against it, they said it would be the end of the world. He likes to also, together with other councillors, rewrite history on King George Square. Now, King George Square was designed and approved by council in 2006. Who had the numbers in the council chamber in 2006? It was actually Deputy Mayor David Hinchcliffe, who was the leader of the majority. And so he actually had the numbers. He could have said yes or no to King George Square. But I'll tell you what really happened. Labour and Liberal at the time, there was no LMP, good old days, came up with a public design composition. We asked architects and designers from right across the country and in fact internationally to put forward their, why are you laughing Greg? To put forward their best designs for King George Square. There were multiple finalists, they were all published to the public of Brisbane and in fact, they were displayed in the foyer of City Hall and people could vote. And there were more than 3,000 submissions received from the public. And the design we have today, that you look out the front of City Hall, was actually chosen by the people of Brisbane. And because it was chosen by the people of Brisbane, the Labour majority supported it when it came for a vote in this chamber. They've forgotten about that one, haven't they? They actually had the numbers, they made King George Square happen and they've spent every year since complaining about it. But you know what else they forgot about in talking about green space? They actually built a motorway through the middle of Victoria Park. It's called the Inner City Bypass. And if that wasn't enough, the Labour state government built a busway through Victoria Park as well. And in fact, they've just recently taken more of Victoria Park to expand Cross River Rail and build a Cross River Rail expansion through. So Labour has a big record of taking parts of Victoria Park for infrastructure projects. So that's what they want you to forget about as well. But what we're talking about here is none of that stuff. We're talking about the wonderful expansion of the Queen Street Mall down Adelaide, Albert Street.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired and we will now put item A and B to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against no, the ayes have it.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order councillor Dixon.
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for 15 minutes for afternoon tea, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Givney that the meeting adjourned for a period of 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye. Those against no, the ayes have it. The meeting will be adjourned when all councillors have left the chamber.
Lord Mayor, item C of the E and C report, please.
Thank you, Mr Acting Chair. Before I address the contents of item C, I just wanted to let everyone know that today we've been doing a scan across the city of the amount of green waste that's been generated. And so just want to confirm that from first thing tomorrow morning at our four resource recovery stations, we'll be having free green waste tipping for residential, residential green waste. So that's available for people to use if they have more than they can fit in their green bin. I would also point out, there are now over 300,000 green bins out there and so there's a lot of extra green bins available as well. So the combination of the new green bins that have been delivered in recent months and this free green waste tipping, I know, will support residents who have green waste to dispose of after the storm yesterday. And so that will kick off first thing when the resource recovery stations open, sorry, 325, 325,000 green bins out there as of this week. So item C is the annual operational plan and quarterly financial report for the period ending September 2025. It's known by another name as well and that is responsible financial management and keeping our commitments to the people of Brisbane. We made a very clear commitment in the lead up to the last election. You can't get more clear than what we said and you can't also get more clear than what Labour said in opposing our approach. But we said we would work hard to keep costs down so that we could keep rates affordable and maintain the lowest rates in South East Queensland. And we also were very upfront about our need to reduce expenditure in a time when costs are increasing. Now, increasing costs, if you don't reduce expenditure at the same time, you get into the situation that we see other levels of government where expenditure spirals, debt spirals, and ultimately taxes and charges spiral out of control. So we're seeing at the state government level, Queensland's net debt is going to soar by 287% by the year 2728, financial year. And also the federal government expects a 28% increase in debt as well. And so what we see in contrast at the council level is a plan to bring down debt over the coming years to give us capacity for what the next round of investment might be at the capital works. But also, this particular quarterly financial report reflects the fact that a number of major projects that we've been working on in recent years have been concluded or are winding down. And so that includes projects like the Mogul Road corridor upgrade, which was well underway the previous year, but now has been concluded and is delivering a great outcome for the people in the western suburbs and through that corridor. It absolutely is doing what we expected and needed it to do, and it's a great outcome there. But that project came to an end. The Kangaroo Point Bridge, obviously, is another project that was opened within the last 12 months. And that was opened on the 16th of December last year, and that project came to an end. So there's a number of reasons why our expenditure is coming down. The metro, obviously, now operational and delivering great results with 5 million people, 5 million trips taken on metro services, an increase in patronage across the bus network, more services being put on. So that project is also being delivered and is getting a great outcome. So there's obvious reasons why our expenditure would be down compared to previous quarters and previous reports. But also one of those reasons is financial discipline. Because if we don't control spending, then ultimately that flows on to the ratepayers, and that's what we're trying to avoid. So what we see in this particular report is another operating surplus, and that's been our consistent record. We've committed that we'll continue to keep the budget balanced. A decrease of 56 million in expenditure in the first quarter of the financial year, and that is reflective of some of the factors that I was talking about just now, with projects coming to an end and expenditure reducing. But also, our net debt is well below our annual budget. And it's an important measure to put things in perspective when Labour, you know, makes outrageous claims about debt. Our annual budget is over $4 billion, and our net debt is 3.5 billion. Now, if you put that in terms of comparison to a household, you know, when you think about the household income and then how much you borrow for your house, most people borrow significantly more, many times more than their annual household income to buy and get into a house. Whereas we've actually got less debt than our annual budget. And so, and that's coming down over the coming years as well by around 20%. Councillor Cunningham. So debt is coming down. And as I said, that gives us capacity for the next round of infrastructure projects to be built. And so there will be a time when debt will potentially go up again, but we'll have to make that judgement based on what needs to be built at the time. But in the meantime, we're consolidating to give us the capacity to, you know, effectively build more in the future, rather than what we see at the federal and state government, which is a never-ending increase in debt being passed on to the next generation. So much more debt by comparison than what we have at the council level. As I mentioned, the quarterly financial report saw the start of metro M1 and M2 services operating simultaneously, together with the Brisbane's new bus network, which delivered more services more often to more people and has increased patronage. And there's been fantastically positive feedback right across the city. And despite Labour's attempts to stir up opposition, they've managed to get a few Labour Party members to sign up to their little data harvesting exercise. But other than that, people have been voting with their feet, jumping on metro and bus services. And we're keen to do more of that as well in partnership with the Chris O'Farrell government. We've obviously kicked off our spraying in earnest of mosquitoes based on expert advice. And the helicopters have been out, the quad bikes have been out, the utes have been out, the forward drives have been out, right across the city treating thousands of sites. In fact, 1,500 extra breeding sites have been treated. We're continuing to offer generous pensioner rebates, with more rebates being offered in the first quarter of this financial year. We're continuing supporting the basics as well. And in the first quarter, more than 2,600 additional potholes were filled. There were a number of extra roads resurfaced, curb and channel projects delivered, drainage projects, park projects and upgrades completed. And so we're making sure that we keep our commitment to invest more than 80% of the entire budget in the suburbs, which is exactly what we're doing. We've been providing community spaces with 26 community halls and facilities available for hire, and it's attracting more bookings. We've actually had 1,600 extra bookings compared to previous reports. And also the Lord Mayor's City Hall concerts have attracted extra attendees as well, 3,500 extra attendees. We've delivered, we're delivering stage one of the Beams Road upgrade and starting works on stage two in one of Brisbane's fastest-growing areas, which is absolutely critical. We also have, as a result of some of the factors that I mentioned, seen a reduction in the materials and services budget. And so if your, you know, if your major projects are coming to an end, you would also expect the materials and services budget to come down. And materials and services include all kinds of things, but particularly things like steel and concrete and asphalt and the things required to build infrastructure. And so that's come down by 93.8 million as well. So fundamentally, this report is meeting our commitments. This report shows we're meeting our commitments. It's another situation where we're committed to financial, responsible financial management, keeping the budget balanced, keeping rates down to be the lowest in South East Queensland. And that is a real and tangible benefit for the people of Brisbane. Because we know that residents in other councils around are paying anywhere between $317 a year extra, up to $700 a year extra in rates. Just for a moment, think about that. Some councils are charging $700 a year in rates extra on average to what people are paying here in Brisbane. And so we'll keep managing the budget responsibly, keep controlling costs to keep rates down and keep the lowest rates in South East Queensland and meet our commitment to the people of Brisbane.
Further speaker, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair, rise to speak on the LNP's first quarter report card. And so if we're to believe what the Lord Mayor just said then, in his sort of defensive position of all the cuts and delays that we see in the document before us today, is that he's claiming expenditure is down in the first quarter of this current financial year we're in because in a previous financial year, unrelated projects came to a conclusion. So he listed Mogul Road and Kangaroo Point Bridge and the metro. I know there's little bits and pieces that are still dragging on with the metro, and there's still a handback of assets to the state government that needs to occur. But the spin from the Lord Mayor today is essentially that expenditure is down in the first quarter of this current financial year because projects completed in a previous budget. But we're not talking about a previous budget. What we have before us today is the current budget. We're not talking about the Kangaroo Point Bridge and Mogul Road, they were funded in previous budgets. The Lord Mayor is comparing the end of September to the 1st of July, but claiming expenditure is down in that period because of completely unrelated things. And then goes on to say that council's net debt, won't talk about total liabilities of course, which total over $6 billion, but net debt's 3.5 billion, and apparently that's less than the council budget. Now, there's a funny figure the Lord Mayor uses to say the budget is $4 billion each and every year, despite the fact we know at the end of each and every year, and this has been the case for the last four at least, hundreds of millions, up to half a billion dollars, has been carried over from one to the next. So there's been $2 billion worth of carryovers over the last four or five years to pad out that so-called $4 billion budget. And not to mention the hundreds of millions, if not running up to close to a billion in one of those years, in depreciation of old and existing assets because they are only of junk value. So the Lord Mayor understands all of this, he knows exactly what the reality is, but he's trying to spin a much more positive tale than actually exists in these papers before us today. Now, revenue is now called income in these papers, have changed terminology. That's up $21.5 million at this point in the year compared to 12 months ago. So obviously a very big boost in cash for this council and cash equivalents. And all courtesy, of course, from the residents and ratepayers of Brisbane. An extra $15 million coming from them through fees and charges this year compared to this point in 2024. And where's the money going in this quarter, of course, in this budget? Because there's $88 million less being spent on materials and services than there was 12 months ago. That's a huge amount of money when it comes to the basics of council. And yet expenses are up by 74.5 million dollars. So what are these expenses exactly? Well, here's a couple that need to be drawn into the light. Chair, depreciation and amortisation up by $4 million. Finance costs, the cost of servicing debt here is almost double now at $41.5 million. And then the nondescript other expenses, maybe the overseas travel and things like that. Maybe the upgrades to seat 1A first class, maybe the Qantas club memberships of the LNP chairs. That's up $4 million. And we can see which chairs are costing Brisbane the most in terms of these expenses. Councillor Wines of Transport for Brisbane, not capital of course, not building, investing in projects, up, rising from $61.5 to $198 million. Councillor Davis in the Sustainable City, rising from $32 to $142 million. And councillor Cunningham of City Governance, rising from $75 to $95 million. Now, of course, they might say, and they'd probably think to themselves, "That's good news because there's more things being built." Of course, you see this larger expenditure, but it's not that. Because those projects fall into capitalised expenses, which have taken a massive cut again from $259 million down to $128.7 million. So it certainly makes you scratch your head, Chair. There's a lot more revenue coming in, in this quarter, from ratepayers and the residents of Brisbane, paying higher rates, paying higher fees and charges, but they're getting less in return out in the suburbs of Brisbane. So in the lead up to the 2032 Olympics, of course, in the midst of a housing and homelessness crisis, where there's much more demand for community services and infrastructure around a growing city, the LNP's answer to that is to cut, is to cut. And not surprising to any of us who observed this regime over a long period of time and their 20-plus years in office. But it might shock people when they start to find out that those services and those infrastructure projects of a smaller scale are also going to be cut in the future with the closing down of the City Projects Office and of the major projects branch within infrastructure for Brisbane. Now, for years, this LNP regime and the LNP brand more broadly have framed themselves as more responsible economic managers. And we heard that again with the Lord Mayor's comments, spending within their means apparently and keeping costs down. But what we have before us is this fairly threadbare, but it's clear enough, report before us today in black and white, is that council has failed under the LNP to keep operational costs low, and they're trying to hide it. If you put aside the moment, the rejig of all the portfolios and the different programme areas and renaming things and rejigging things around to obfuscate the difference between this year, right now and last year. But take Programme One, Transport for Brisbane, as an example, where we could see, last year we could see the breakdown of expenses across, and I quote, "strategy", Brisbane Metro Maintenance Planning and Design ferries now, and a whole lot of stuff in there. Now you just see two categories listed there, public transport and transport operations. You don't have to be an accountant to look at that and see that this year's number is lower than last year's number. And that is a cut in terms of operations within Transport for Brisbane. And while it is more expensive to operate the transport portfolio, there is less being spent on actually delivering material public transport, infrastructure and services in the suburbs of Brisbane. But is anybody really surprised about that after the LNP's track record? This is, of course, a LNP administration that went in to negotiate the latest bus contract with their, what we thought were their good friends, we thought were close political allies and colleagues in the state government, and came out with a worse deal for the people of Brisbane, a worse deal. There's been 22 million passengers on bus and metro figures, but obviously no mention that passenger figures are up since 50 cent fares, of course, compounded by Brisbane's population growth. And we see the boasting of faster route times in one of the few dot points that are in here. Well, of course, those suburban routes that have been cut in half should be faster. You would expect that when they remove 50% of the route and still call it the same route, it should be faster. To save, to shave two minutes off on average, they're making everybody who catches a bus out of the suburbs of Brisbane have a worse experience. And just ask those passengers who are jammed into a bus like Sardine's during one of the now four peak hours that Brisbane has every single weekday, we're hearing about those significant issues in the suburbs. And not everyone living in Brisbane is looking to get a bus directly in and out of the CBD. Two thirds of commuters move from suburb to suburb around Brisbane. And the results from our survey, real-life experiences of real-life people, the average rating of the network after the 30th of June was 1.4 out of 10. Just seven out of 10 respondents, not just, seven out of 10 respondents say their commute length has increased since the 30th of June. Five out of 10 respondents say the number of transfers they're required now to perform has increased since the 30th of June. Seven out of 10 respondents say they are unhappy with the changes. But I guess if the Lord Mayor spent less time attacking people here in the council chamber and less time sitting in the business class lounges and more time on the streets talking to the working class, he would hear that feedback from people himself. And as people walk around their suburbs, they can't help but feel like something's amiss as well, Chair. That their suburb and the city more broadly is under strain, just like household budgets. Well, you're not imagining it if you think something's up these days, because the numbers back it up as well. In Programme Two, Infrastructure for Brisbane, we see, for this programme area, revenue is up by almost $25 million. Expenses to manage the department are up by $30 million, and that is paid for at the expense of actual material projects out in the suburbs with capitalised expenses down by the same amount, by $30 million. So less money being spent on capital projects, more money being spent on expenses. And as we know, a whole lot of that is through depreciation.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
Point of order, move for the extension.
Seconded.
Extension move by councillor Strunk, seconded by councillor Messi. Those agree, say aye? Those who can say no? The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. So the decrease in capital expenditure is matched by the increase in expenses. But, you know, don't worry according to the Lord Mayor. Everything's fine according to the Lord Mayor, and he mentioned he breezed past it. But he missed a major milestone for his LNP regime. And councillor Strunk, do you have that bottle of champagne? Get it out now, shake it up, because we've got a celebration here. Chair, pop the champagne. They have completed three stormwater projects, three. The Lord Mayor just said it as if there was some major achievement as he rolled through his list and said drainage projects, stormwater projects, three projects done so far this year. There's 190 suburbs across Brisbane, and the LNP have managed to complete just three stormwater projects. And we heard them carry on earlier today about the bomb service, about warnings, as if they don't have some skin in the game in addressing the flooding concerns that people have all around this city. Just three projects in this first quarter of the year across 190 suburbs in Brisbane. But don't worry, apparently they're progressing 24 others this year. But we know that- that for the L N P, progress can just be a newsletter or putting it in a dot point in a Living in Brisbane newsletter, and that's considered as progressing it. The completed footpath and bikeway renewal projects. Now, this is if there's a badly damaged footpath or section of a bikeway that needs to be completely removed and rebuilt in a section. They've done nine, just nine in the first quarter of this year. And not too long ago, Chair, we read that there were about five thousand missing or broken footpaths in Brisbane. And they managed to get nine done. I guess that's better than zero, I guess. But don't worry, there's four currently underway with the L N P progressing design for then another twelve that might get pushed into the next financial year. That doesn't even begin to scratch the surface of what is needed in the suburbs of Brisbane to make Brisbane a more livable place. But that all makes sense when you see how little is being spent on the materials and services budget within council. Now, with numbers like these, it's only wonder why last week about, you know, three hundred people packed out the Winham Municipal Hall voicing their discontent about the Winham Precinct Plan process. They don't have any trust this council will deliver the infrastructure required to accommodate for growth. Most people accept growth, but they want to know that council's going to step up and deliver more services, more amenities, more utilities and infrastructure as well. And as we heard from young people on the night there in Winham, they also want affordable housing.
Mister Deputy Chair.
Point of order.
Don't think that this Winham plan is in the report. Can you draw back the leader of the opposition, please?
Councillor Cassidy, can you come back to your report, please?
Yes, Winham is referenced for the deputy mayor's, page twenty-three. You can open it up. Are you following along?
Yeah, councillor Cassidy, you speak to the intent of the report.
Winham says suburban renewal precinct plans, that's what I'm talking about. Thank you, Chair. Thanks very much. So as we heard from young people on the night there in Winham, they also want affordable housing, and they're sick of their elected officials spewing off developer talking points as they try and brush off people's real concerns. Young people born and raised in Winham want to stay close to family and friends. They don't want to be pushed out due to multi-million dollar units. They have no chance to afford not just Winham, of course, that's Brisbane as a whole. I read an interesting article in the most recent Sangat guide there. Now, this sort of proves a point, and I'm sure the Lord Mayor, it's one of two things, Chair, either doesn't care or have a concern about planning in Brisbane or just doesn't actually have any idea what's going on around the city. But there are serious warning signs for all of us, that it's one of these two things. Because the Lord Mayor recently visited Sangat, I read there, maybe to check in with his representative and good friend, Brock Alexander. But what he said to the small crowd that had gathered there was extraordinary, Chair. He said in there, and I quote, that only eighteen homes were built in the Deegan Ward within the last four years. Now, I was shocked that the Lord Mayor would say something that was so factually wrong. I assumed it was a mistake in the article when it was printed, but it turns out it wasn't. I actually checked, and that's exactly what the.
Point of order, councillor Adams.
I understand there's a line that says the Winham Precinct Plan, but that is about the money towards the precinct plan, not a community meeting that councillor Cassidy may have held.
Yeah, councillor Cassidy, please come back to the item itself.
Thanks, thanks very much, Chair. I'm talking about Programme Four, Future Brisbane, which is the programme of the budget which deals with development applications, development services. This is a very broad document that's before us today, which is the entire budget, the entire budget, which funds development services in Brisbane who assess development applications. So thank you, I will proceed. Now, the Lord Mayor seemed to think that there was just, let me check that number again, he reckons in four years, only eighteen homes have been built in the Deegan Ward. He wasn't aware of the seventy-eight townhouses in Stanworth Road, the fifty-five new houses under construction right now on Muller Road, or the hundreds of townhouses and units and standalone homes being built along Hanford Road and Rogan Road, or the dozen or so houses built in the suburb of Deegan, the suburb of Deegan alone over the last few years. Now, the reason this Lord Mayor doesn't have a plan for affordable housing is because he doesn't even know what's going on in Brisbane, it's quite clear. He only knows what he sees out of seat one A on the plane as he leaves Brisbane Airport. They've seen this, people have seen this time and time again, and losing hope that this L N P council has any interest in housing affordability whatsoever. And the L N P continue to perpetuate this by arguing against setting aspirational targets for affordable housing in council plans. Now, this just proves the L N P doesn't even have an aspiration for affordable housing here in Brisbane. On Programme Three, Sustainable City, an expensive programme, but we're not making any progress, as we discover in this document, towards zero waste, despite the fact that at this point in time that we're discussing, there were seventy-five thousand new green bin lids around Brisbane, and now we're at over three hundred thousand, we hear. But there was only a four point eight percent increase into green waste. So an extra seventy-five thousand bins at this point and less than a five percent increase into green waste and away from general landfill. Now, we hope that's gone up significantly in the last couple of months with the rollout of more green bins, but if you extrapolate those seventy-five thousand out there, we might be looking at twenty percent increase into green waste, which, as we know, it's something and it's a step in the right direction. But this also tells us that we need to be, again, having a plan and having a Lord Mayor that's looking forward to removing organic waste from landfill altogether. Now, the L N P giggles and carries on when we talk about F O G O. And while they can giggle in here in the council chamber, they also need to get really busy digging a hole out in Ipswich to bury millions of tonnes of more waste once the Rochedale Dump fills up. And this is particularly important because this is in the context of what the Lord Mayor just said, that the L N P bin tax is going to put more and more pressure on councils around Queensland, let alone the biggest council in Queensland. So to deal with the L N P's bin tax, we actually need a Lord Mayor with a plan, rather than just rolling over and saying to the L N P Premier, okay, sure, we'll cop the L N P bin tax and then putting.
Mister Deputy Chairman.
Point of order, councillor Toomey.
The leader of the opposition is misleading the chamber. The bin tax was introduced by the Labor state government, not the L N P council.
Councillor Toomey, it's not for you to debate in a point of order.
I'm sure councillor Toomey will get up and debate this point vociferously shortly. Programme Five, Community Arts, formerly known as Lifestyle and Community Services, expenses above budget, period mainly due to high transportation expenses and then provide community services. Outcome is expected to be adjusted in the next budget review to not well-versed in L N P regime. You speak, that means there'll be cuts on the horizon to that programme. More people are moving to Brisbane, paying more rates and fees and charges, and getting less community services from their council, and less staff to deliver them, to the tune of about four hundred fewer permanent staff. What a rip-off. Programme Six, Customer Services, has changed so drastically that you actually can't fairly compare this year's report to the last, unfortunately. But we already see income is above budget due to parking infringement revenue, because this goes in a consolidated revenue, they don't have to worry about specifying where this revenue is spent in this programme area. If you're an optimist about A I and technology, you would think council would deploy these to make your lives easier by driving down council costs and making doing business easier and cheaper. But so far, all we've seen is efficient and innovative ways to take more money from unsuspecting visitors and residents through fines. The big taxing L N P council, such as when, you know, an example, this L N P mayor and his council blind cited small businesses down in councillor Chongwa's area in Milton with overnight parking changes. It's only after people called him out on ABC Radio to complain, he pledged to waive all those fines, remember that? Another broken promise, of course, and that's why parking infringements revenue is up, of course. And the expenses required to roll this technology out and manage it are also up. We see that because this, an adjustment is coming in the next budget review as well. So the cost of enforcement is eating into what's available for delivering customer service.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
Point of order.
Yes, councillor.
Move for an extension.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Extension moved by councillor Strong, seconded by councillor Messi. Those in favour, say aye?
Aye.
Those who can say no? The ayes have it, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair, just two more minutes, I reckon. Where was I? Programme Six still. Notes that visits and borrowings from public libraries in this section here. And we know unfortunately that the L N P have stopped caring about libraries, or at least see them as the first and easiest thing they can cut back on when they're trying to, when they're trying to cut back on expenditure because of cost overruns on the Kangaroo Point Bridge and Brisbane Metro and Mogal Road and things like that that the Lord Mayor talked about earlier.
Mister Deputy Chairman.
So if you think about First Five Forever.
Sorry, point of order, councillor Toomey.
It was the Labor Party that closed libraries, not the L N P.
Thanks very much, Chair.
Councillor Toomey, I don't have.
I think the leader of the opposition is just exercising his imagination to the full extent.
Councillor Toomey, I don't have your point of order. Sorry, councillor Cassidy, please continue.
Thanks very much, Chair. So you think about the First Five Forever programme, and you think about complaints we hear from staff and the stress that they are under. And despite fifteen point four million dollars on libraries so far this year, you again have to really ask where that money is going when we're hearing all of these cuts, when we're seeing all of these services being reduced, where we're seeing increasingly library staff being left alone in libraries to manage entire libraries on their own, which is in breach of councils' enterprise bargaining agreements, and they're being forced to keep libraries open when they're so short-staffed. Where's all the extra money for this programme being spent? And finally, city governance. Income has fallen by almost twenty million dollars, expenses are up by over twenty million dollars, and capitalised expenses are down by ten million dollars, a curious programme area. These numbers, though, when you think about that, aligns with the mood on the ground amongst our council staff, that this city is not well governed by its political leadership. Now, while council's public servants are trying their very best, they're working with less resources and worsening conditions and with less colleagues to support them. As I mentioned earlier, in twenty twenty-three, the number of full-time staff serving the people of Brisbane was six thousand nine hundred and sixteen. Now, in twenty twenty-five, the actual full-time headcount is down to six thousand four hundred and ninety staff. That's a massive drop, a four hundred and twenty-six full-time staff within council. And that makes a real difference to the quality of life in Brisbane and let alone the health and wellbeing of those remaining employees. It means potholes go unfilled for longer, drains, creeks remain clogged up for longer, street tree pruning and planting gets delayed, and why over a twelve-month period, we see so few basic infrastructure projects like fixing footpaths get complete. You know, it can't help when one particular person, of course, on the council's payroll is not at their desk. We know the Lord Mayor spends most of his time outside of this place, he is scrolling through Skyscanner, looking for reasons to fly away, and I'm sure there's plenty of those reasons coming up. Coming up next year, we'll start to see L N P councils disappearing left, right and centre, and I'm sure they'll try and beat their record of spending three hundred and forty-two dollars a day on overseas travel next year. But as we have discussed in here before, Chair, places which might be nice to visit are not nice to live with, with the cost of housing being a key issue. But perhaps the Lord Mayor could have, in all his travels to all those exotic places, reported back on what not to do. But we don't see any indication of that, unfortunately, in all those Olympic cities that got it so fundamentally wrong when it comes to housing. All those Olympic cities, like Brisbane is now one, that see so many people forced out, pushed out, priced out, kicked out, forgotten about. That is not the kind of Brisbane we want to see in the future. But it seems almost daily occurrence at this point that Brisbane residents are stuck with a new dread as they read about vacancy rates, house prices and rental affordability here in Brisbane. And we hear the solution from the Lord Mayor is to say that in Kirilpa, in an answer earlier to councillor Massey's question, is that the answer is essentially still always keeps coming back to Kirilpa and delivering housing there. And yet we find out that the first application approved under the Kirilpa T L P I won't come out of the ground for about another six years from today.
That's right.
From today, even though the Kirilpa T L P I has been around for the last two years. So we're not getting bang for buck. We're not getting bang for buck on housing when it comes to any of these Lord Mayor's plans, particularly when they deliberately exclude affordable housing and housing affordability from them. We're not getting bang for buck when people are paying the highest rates on record here in Brisbane, but getting less and less in return in council services and council infrastructure. We're not getting bang for buck when people are seeing all of those fees and charges through the roof. And at the same time, the Lord Mayor and L N P councillors' travel bill is through the roof as well. This is a report card, but it doesn't show great financial management. What it shows is that this Lord Mayor and his L N P regime, after twenty-two years in office, is desperately out of touch.
Further speaker? Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mister Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on item C, the annual operational plan and quarterly financial report for the period ended September twenty twenty-five. And the report, once again, demonstrates the Shriner Council's work in the Future Brisbane programme in helping to get more roofs overheads while ensuring that Brisbane remains the best place to live, work and visit. So turning to planning for a growing city, we are continuing to ensure that housing policy settings achieve the environment where homes can be built. You know, we are very keen for families to have the security of a home and for renters and others and young people to have an opportunity to buy homes, and also for older residents to have the opportunity to downsize in a location that suits them. So with this in mind, we've obviously been pursuing our suburban renewal precincts programme for some time now, and that is all about providing housing in good locations, near amenity, near public transport. And at the present, we are progressing well with four of those. And in fact, we recently commenced a piece of work out in Alderley, and on the fifth of December, the Stones Corner Suburban Renewal Precinct will be embedded in city plan. We want to give people the opportunity to live close to the things that make their lives easy and smooth, and that includes transport, shops, services, jobs, green space and everything in between. That's what our precinct plans are all about. Mister Deputy Chair, I've previously mentioned in this chamber, the South East Queensland Regional Plan intends for Brisbane to deliver an additional two hundred and ten thousand eight hundred dwellings by twenty forty-six. This constitutes an average of eight thousand four hundred and thirty-two dwellings per year. The Shriner team are looking to pull every lever in our toolkit to be able to assist people in getting into their own homes and not only meet these targets, but surpass them, and that is exactly what we're doing. Ensuring that there is a variety for the market, we consider all types of housing options presented, including townhouses, aged care facilities, apartments, subdivision of land for additional lots, rooming accommodation, as well as short-stay hotels. From July to September this year, council officers have decided one thousand and twenty-six development applications, which has resulted in a net increase in over three thousand six hundred residential dwellings. Sadly, this isn't always enough to get houses out of the ground with construction costs at a record high and the labor market often in demand for skilled workers, it certainly is an uphill battle. Turning to enhancing Brisbane's livability, we are committed to ensuring that Brisbane remains Australia's lifestyle capital. Our Better Suburbs Places and Spaces programme is seeing our neighbourhoods become even more vibrant and lively with great upgrades delivered at Ryan's Road in Nunda, while our initial engagement with the community for Lambert Road in Drapilly was completed. We look forward to progressing this project and delivering a concept plan that reflects the community's priorities in that area, and I'm sure councillor Wolf is excited about this as we are. Our grassroots-driven Art Force Brisbane programme continues to see talented and bright residents put their artistic skills to the test, and we've seen more than twenty painted traffic signal boxes in this period. Turning to the economic development portfolio, the Shriner Council continues to support small and local businesses through a range of programmes and workshops, and that is evident through the achievements of last quarter. Releasing a new guide to our precinct playbook, Shops That Shine, helps visual merchandising for businesses, and this is accessible via our website. With both the suburban business hub at Nunda and the Brisbane Business Hub in the city, we ensure that there are a number of events, workshops and mentoring programmes available to businesses and residents. Last quarter, we delivered nineteen workshops and fifteen mentoring sessions with six hundred and sixty-nine event attendees. We also continued to host a Small Business Roundtable, which provides us with great insights so that we can better assist industry. We have also recently established the Queen Street Mall Engagement Group, which will meet next month for the first time with the aim to strengthen collaboration, coordination and community. and communication across the Queen Street Mall precinct. We on this side of the chamber understand that small business is the backbone of the economy and the heart of the community. This is all part of striving to ensure that Brisbane is the most small business friendly city in Australia.
Council Alan, your time has expired. Further speaker? Council Messi.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on item C briefly. It seems that every time we get to the chamber and one of these documents is delivered, it's the same story. We hear the same spin over and over again. We're kind of tired of the same lines that are just delivered from the LNP, either from the Lord Mayor or through you, Chair, from the Deputy Mayor. But as time continues to progress, the truth continues to be seen by residents across the city, on the ground, in the way that these cuts and the direst financial situation that the LNP council administration is in. And when I say this, I'm not talking about, you know, people that are party political. Just recently, I was at a community meeting and, you know, residents talk to me all the time. They'll tell me they didn't vote for me. They'll tell me they voted for the Liberals. That's fine. And a group of them were like, yeah, we know the council's broke. We can see it. And so while the lines in here are the same over and over and over and over again, the disconnection to what's actually happening on the ground and what residents are actually seeing is very clear from the spin that we hear in here. And when we get to the document, when we get to these quarterly financial reports, as loose as they can be, they do have to report something. So there are things that we can find in there that can indicate, not only to us as councillors here in chambers, but also that we can highlight to our city. An example that I would give is Program One, Transport for Brisbane, looks like here. I'm going to just talk about bus stops for a second because bus stops are really important. We know that, I think it's sixteen percent are still not DA compliant. We know that bus stops are really important as public transport usage is increasing in the city. And what we've done in the first quarter is completed the construction of three bus stops. That's it. And even these three bus stops were partially funded by the state government. And so intrinsically, we're not investing in bus stops and we've only completed three in the first quarter. I'll go on. Completed design of four bus stops, the design of, and commenced and continued design of eight additional bus stops, noting that in last year's financial budget, from memory, there was about twenty-four bus stops that were in the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And nearly fifty or sixty percent of those bus stops were actually rolled on to this year. So not only are we not designing bus stops, we're not completing them, even though we know bus usage is going up. Another point that I'll just bring up very quickly is in Sustainable City. Program Three, so again, three drainage projects completed. And I believe it says here, five. Five projects for parks. How many parks do we have in the city? How many parks? Two thousand parks in the city. And we've completed five projects and three drainage projects. Like, we have a role. You know, a line that is always continually said in here, through you, Deputy Chair, by the Lord Mayor, always said in here is Brisbane floods. Okay, if Brisbane floods, then why are we not investing to make sure that our residents are safe on the flood plain? And it's clear that that investment isn't happening. And another thing that I'd like to highlight is in Program Five, specifically the capital expenditure for community facilities. Well, the capital expenditure in this program, which sits versus the actual budget that we approved at zero point two eight percent of what was delivered in this quarter. What does that actually mean? It means community facilities like our halls, public amenities, cultural facilities, libraries are obviously not being invested in. And I'll touch base on that briefly because I was told that libraries, for a little while there, not too long ago, were actually asking each other if they had spare sticky notepads or asking each other if they had spare pens. That's how much the LNP council, the Lord Mayor, leading the city, has disinvested in libraries, when libraries should be a part of the coal and the stall of our communities. I know the Kirilpa Library is important. This annual budget, every time it comes around.
Council Messi, your time has expired.
It's rubbish.
Further speaker? Council Howard.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I'm proud to rise today to talk on item C and in support of Program Five, Community in the Arts, because this program is all about delivering for Brisbane's communities and enhancing the lifestyle that makes our city so special. Chair, the item before us tells a clear story. The Shriner Council is delivering. We are investing in facilities, we are supporting local clubs, we are celebrating culture and we are creating even more opportunities for people to come together. Because, Mr Deputy Chair, this Shriner Council isn't interested in headlines. The only thing we're interested in is building a better Brisbane, delivering for the residents of Brisbane, delivering more events, more support and more opportunities for everyone. So let's start with our community spaces, our community halls. They've never been busier. More people than ever before, Mr Deputy Chair. Families, seniors, community groups, all finding a place to connect. These halls are the beating heart of our suburbs, where friendships are made, where milestones are celebrated and where local culture thrives. And City Hall, it continues to shine as the people's place. Week after week, thousands of residents walk through those doors to experience history, to enjoy concerts, to feel part of something bigger. And it's not just the building, Mr Deputy Chair. City Hall is a symbol of Brisbane's spirit. And the events, the numbers you see listed in this report are more than just numbers. Each of these represents an experience, a moment. River Stage is alive with music and energy. More and more people are enjoying this iconic venue, coming together under the stars to celebrate world-class entertainment. From international acts to homegrown talent, River Stage is where Brisbane comes to life. And the Lord Mayor's City Hall concerts is a wonderful tradition that continues to be enjoyed by thousands and thousands of residents. Free concerts, bringing joy to people of all ages. And it's all about accessibility, making sure that everyone gets a chance to experience the magic of our beautiful City Hall bursting with talent from homegrown artists. We had an incredible response to the Lord Mayor's Photographic Awards this year, entries that captured the beauty, the diversity and the heart of our city. And it's not just a competition, it's a celebration of who we are in Brisbane. We're also making our suburbs safer and more inclusive. Through the Safer Suburbs Grants, local clubs are getting the support they need to protect their members and their facilities. Because when people feel safe, communities thrive. And we're upgrading sporting facilities with projects like delivering new artificial fields and more accessibility at Grange Thistle Football Club. Mr Deputy Chair, that's about inclusion. That's about making sure everyone can play, everyone can belong. And our active and healthy program continues to grow with thousands of residents taking part in free fitness sessions across the city. Mr Deputy Chair, this is about more than exercise. It's about connection, it's about mental health and it's about building stronger communities. These achievements tell a very clear story. The Shriner Council is delivering for the residents of Brisbane. We're investing in the facilities, clubs and places that make our city great. We're delivering more to see and do and we're making Brisbane even better. And I recommend it to the chamber.
Further speaker? Council Strong.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. Listen, I rise to speak on clause C of this quarterly report. And the first thing I want to say about it, of course, is that it overpromises and underdelivers, basically. And probably the best example I can use locally, because the Lord Mayor always likes us to talk locally, is the Ellen Grove District Park. Now, it was, there was a bit of fanfare at the budget last year when it came down that there was going to be two district parks that were going to be developed. Now, Ellen Grove had had its consultation. So there was money in previous budgets for consultation. And then there was a bit of a delay in the second stage of the consultation, but that came through as well. And the community knew exactly what it wanted. And to the credit of this council, I would say that you followed their recommendations. And then it was supposed to be, the work was supposed to start this financial year at some stage. Then I got a briefing a few weeks ago saying, guess what? It's not going to happen. And I said, okay. And they said, well, we had two scheduled and we can only do one this financial year. And I said, okay, but you promised. That was part of your budget. You announced it. So that sort of told me that funds are tight. The money's not there. Where's the money gone? Of course, if you believe what the Lord Mayor said, it's all about the materials and all the rest of it's gone up. Steel's gone up, concrete's gone up, everything's gone up. But they knew that. When they were formulating the budget, this particular budget, they knew that that was going to be the case, right? So why promise something you're not going to deliver? Or I could be really cynical and say, well, you just promised all this stuff. You get the great headlines, you get the great budget in the paper and then you start cutting things. And that's what this, well, in the last few years, that's what this council's been doing, whether it's four hundred million or a few, or a hundred million or whatever it is, depending upon which quarter it is, we just seem to cut things. So that was really disappointing. And I just want to move on to reconstruction for footpaths, right? We've had a lot of footpaths identified and on the list for reconstruction. Active school travel is one that reminds me of the Anala State School back in twenty-three, which they undertook active school travel and picked Japonica Street or Elizabeth Ruys Park, which is fronted Japonica Street. And we went down there for the first walk up to the school and, oh my gosh, the whole thing needed to be reconstructed. There wasn't any portion that didn't have a big crack in it. By the time we got to Bioda Street, which is where, you know, Strip Shopping Centre is, it was really bad, really bad, too. Now, to the credit, the council has fixed that by the street, because there was a skips program that happened a few years before. So, you know, it's a pretty important part of my ward in the Anala area. But the, and right around the lake, the Lake Park precinct, there is big cracks in the one point two wide shared footpaths all the way around, areas up in freshwater that have been earmarked to be reconstructed for a number of years now and just nothing happened. So, you know, we're just not spending money on the basics, the basics to keep people safe and, you know, on the parks, you know? I mean, we're not developing, we've slowed down the development of parks. We're not adding many new parks to our portfolio, especially those parks in those areas that really have very limited green space or recreational space like the suburb of Polara and the Calvingale Ward. So it's, and, you know, just, you know, we have this competition about being the lowest rated council in Southeast Queensland. And, you know, the Lord Mayor says it every year, we are the lowest. But, you know, at what price services, you know? I mean, it's great to be able to have the lowest rates, but you've got to also pay for services.
Council Strong, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Further speaker? Councilor Hutton.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I rise today to speak in support of item C, the annual operational plan progress and quarterly financial report for the period ending September two thousand and twenty-five. And, Mr Deputy Chair, it actually just shows how our Shriner Council continues to deliver for the people of Brisbane. It shows how we continue to provide essential services while also investing in the programs that makes Brisbane lifestyles even better. Now, I'm actually going to speak towards my new program, which I know some people have mentioned, the wonderful program of customer services. So this is the first time that we've been talking about this program in the quarterly report. So I want to touch on some of the great achievements that we have done in this portfolio. I'm going to start with libraries. Our libraries are a clear example of our commitment in action. The Shriner Council continues to invest in modern, accessible and community-focused libraries that support learning, literacy and connection right across Queensland, across Brisbane, my apologies. Our libraries remain some of the most visited community facilities in the city, providing welcoming, safe and inclusive spaces that residents rely on each and every day. And I just want to touch on that. Two weeks ago, when we had the storm, I know that at Intrapili Library, obviously residents had lost power and we had three thousand people drop into the Intrapili Library to charge their phone and our wonderful librarians welcomed them and supported them. So I really want to commend the team there at Intrapili and across the city who did a great job. Since July, more than one point four million people have visited our libraries, demonstrating the importance as a neighbourhood hubs and places where residents can hang out, read and learn even more about whatever they wish to learn across our city. The network has more than two point three million loans over the last period, which has seen a huge amount of people coming in and out of our libraries, borrowing, whether it's digital or physical copies of our resources. Now, I'm very excited to let you know that our two thousand and twenty-five Gold Star and Little Star program has been the biggest it has ever been, Madam, Mr Chair. And we had over six thousand one hundred children participate in that, this quarter. These programs create a pathway for children to grow with reading as part of their daily lives. And since inception, it has reached more than one hundred and twenty-five thousand children across Brisbane. Chair, we all know how important this is. Just ten minutes a day can build a child's vocabulary by six hundred thousand words in just a year. So, Mr Chair, I actually just want to touch on some of the feedback that we've heard across the chamber here today. So the Labor always say that we underinvest in libraries, but let's just take a quick look at the facts. Unlike the former sorely Labor administration, which closed local libraries during its time in office, we've proudly kept every library open, all while investing in new facilities and major upgrades. Now, I thought it was interesting because Councilor Cassidy commented on this, and he has just received a brand new wonderful roof at his Sangate Library, which he was very proud to crow about on his Facebook page, which is wonderful. I'm so glad to see that we all love investing in libraries. So from early literacy programs and English conversation groups to author talks and podcasting workshops, our team have done an incredible job over the last quarter. And might I just add, those author talks are fabulous. We have had so many incredible authors. Brian Brown was the most recent one. And it is such a great way for our residents to get in, meet their local author and learn about how their book was created. It is a fabulous, fabulous program. So, Madam, Mr Chair, when Labor stand up and scream underinvestment, the truth is quite the opposite. And I would like to suggest that Councilor Cassidy's contributions were more of a fairy tale and fantasy, a story that we shouldn't be learning from, Mr Chair. I also want to touch on some of the other parts of this program, which include mosquitoes. As we all know, our mosquito program is so important, particularly as we head into the summer period. It is one of the largest, most sophisticated in the country. And since July, we've conducted aerial treatments to target large-scale mosquito breeding grounds. Complementing this, over twelve hundred sites have been treated throughout the mosquito ground control program in just the last quarter, twelve hundred sites in just the last quarter. This ensures effective management in suburban parks, drains and other high-risk areas. And, Mr Chair, I know that I am going to run out of time, but I really want to say a huge thank you to all of the offices in customer services. You continue to deliver for the people of Brisbane and we are truly appreciative.
Further speaker? Council Griffith.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on this item, but particularly to speak on the ineffectiveness of this LNP administration. Once again, we hear the sham from the previous council in relation to libraries. And I just want to address that by saying that there are no new initiatives in libraries, there's no new vision in libraries. Polara still does not have a library. Maruka was promised a library when we took on the additional population of twenty thousand extra people, but it wasn't included in the infrastructure plan. And Annaly Libraries in... And Annaly Library is in a really poor condition. So I wouldn't be patting yourselves on the back councillors on that side of the chamber. But Annaly Library brings me to the real point that I want to speak to you here today. And that is the ineffective way councils being managed at the moment and also the ineffective way that costs are being managed. Recently, I was approached by some residents with councillor Johnston to deal with some possums in the roof at Annaly Library. Couple of possums have made their home there and they need to be put, need to be taken out of the roof. We have some money to fix the roof and fix the air conditioning. We don't have money to relocate the possums. So yes, I agreed with councillor Johnston that it was important we get some possum boxes to put outside on the, in the trees outside the library. Went off to council and asked about those possum boxes. And a quote has subsequently come back, how much do you think it costs for this council to install two wooden possum boxes in a tree on our land? Couple of hundred? Let's have a, 2,000, couple of hundred? LMP people? They're all hiding behind their Christmas decorations over there. No, it was $9,600. $9,600 to put in two possum boxes, two wooden possum boxes. Wasn't a hotel? I asked the officers, I said, what does this contain? Is it a mansion of possum boxes? Is it well designed architectural possum boxes? No, no councillor. It's actually councillor, less than half the money is spent on installing these two possum boxes and looking after them for, I think, three months. Less than half the money, so about 4,500. The rest is council cost. The rest is council overheads. How shocking is that? Four possums, four possums. I, I think they should be protected. But I think this is ridiculous. And I think the way this council is running the show is ridiculous. And I think this price of $9,600 for two possum boxes just shows the farcical way this mayor runs the show and the farcical way his LMP councillors regard, regard running Brisbane. This is farcical. And it was backed up in the Sunday Mail by a report that showed how much it's costing to get infrastructure built in Brisbane. And it was astounding. $83,283 for Hyde Road, for the park shelter at Hyde Road, councillor Johnston. $83,000. I got charged $44,000 to put a tap in a park. A tap in a park. 46? There you go, you beat me. $46,000 for a tap in the park. Silence from the LMP councillors over there. Are you ashamed or are you embarrassed? Or do you think it's just business as usual? Where's the mayor? What's the mayor got to say about this? Oh, he's off somewhere, Paris, Rome, Dubai.
Councillor Griffiths, your time has expired. Further speaker? Councillor Perry.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. And I rise to speak on Item C, the annual operation plan progress and quarterly financial report. And I'm pleased to speak in support of this item in the Shrinna Council's record of delivering infrastructure that keeps Brisbane moving. Brisbane is Australia's fastest growing capital city and growth demands targeted and well planned infrastructure investment. Our residents expect options that are reliable, safer and faster to get around our city. And those options are exactly what this council continues to deliver. Whether it's roads, bridges or active travel, we are delivering the infrastructure that Brisbane needs to evolve as a city in the 21st century. This quarterly financial report shows that we are planning, investing wisely and keeping our city on track. Mr Deputy Chair, a key part of this work is the early concept design investigations that are now underway for the replacement of the Coronation Drive Bridge. For clarity's sake, this is the substructure that sits beneath Coronation Drive itself. It runs under the traffic lanes from the retaining wall near the bicentennial bikeway and supports the road above. The structure is coming to the end of its life and we are acting early to plan for its replacement. Planning now is essential to avoid road impacts, minimizing disruption to residents and ensuring the road remains a safe and reliable corridor well into the future. Across our suburbs, we've seen continued progress on dozens of smaller but critically important road projects that keep our city moving every day. We've resurfaced 74 roads right across the city and completed curb and channel upgrades at 15 locations. We've also completed footpath and bikeway renewals at nine locations, with a further four projects currently under construction and another 12 in design. Our district projects program has delivered the completed upgrade of Railway Street at Banyo and Nudgee. Detailed design is advancing at the intersections of Hamilton Road and Spence Road, as well as the Underwood Road and Gaskell Street intersection. We've progressed the Winton Road and Hemet Tingalpa intersection upgrade with several additional projects now scheduled for delivery. Design has also commenced for the 2026-27 Black Spot program and site assessments are underway for the 27-28 shortlist. We've also delivered some minor works at multiple locations, like pit and cable renewals and additional safety improvements. These smaller projects may not grab headlines, but they are essential, Mr Deputy Chair. They make daily travel safer, strengthen our network and support residents in every corner of our city. Madam Chair, the quarterly financial report also shows the progress we have made on the iconic Story Bridge. Everyone in the chamber would know that we have finished the work on the replacement footpaths and both are now open to the public again. The replacement footpaths are just one part of our investment in the Story Bridge. Since 2019, the Shrinna Council has invested nearly $80 million in this asset. We have always been committed to the Story Bridge's long term future. This quarter, we've also repaired two gantry rail connections and we are advancing planning for the bridges, sorry, gantry rail connections and we are advancing planning for the bridge's long term restoration. We'll keep working to deliver the restoration of this iconic asset so that the next generation of Queenslanders can enjoy Brisbane's most iconic backdrop. Alongside this major work, we continue to invest in the parts of the network that support walking, riding and scooting. As part of our commitment to keeping Brisbane moving, we also continue to encourage more residents to choose active transport. We've delivered 36 riding skills workshops and commenced our new sponsorship with the wonderful Traction. Traction helps provide bike build programs for more than 50 people and helps to provide hands on skills for our residents. Work also continues on the Viola Place connection of the Morton Bay cycleway. It will create a smoother, safer and more continuous route for riders travelling along the northern suburbs.
Point of order, Chair. If we're talking about active travel, would councillor Perry answer, take a question I'm asking? Sorry.
Councillor Perry, would you care to take a question?
No.
No, sorry.
That's okay.
Councillor Perry, please.
Thank you. Work will also continue along the Viola Place connection of the Morton Bay cycleway. It will create a smoother, safer and more continuous route for riders travelling across our northern suburbs. We have continued to progress work to enhance asset management practices using, ensuring a more integrated approach across transport, real estate and operational portfolios. Mr Deputy Chair, these active travel investments sit alongside the major projects, the local upgrades and the long term planning that defines this portfolio. They show our commitment to building a network that supports every kind of journey, whether residents are walking, riding, driving or catching public transport. Madam Chair, it would be impossible to talk about every highlight in the infrastructure portfolio, but every item in this report reflects the same goal, delivering safe, reliable and well planned infrastructure for our growing city and keeping Brisbane moving. And I commend it to the chamber.
Further speaker? Councillor Wise.
Thanks, Mr Chair. It's just a great opportunity now to talk about some of the wonderful things that we've been able to achieve through this review. But I also feel the need to respond to some of the statements that were made about Program One by in particular the leader of the opposition, who said that somehow the state government, our dear friends, had shortchanged us somehow. And I think it's important to remember that as part of the deal which is discussed in this document, that the change of the funding arrangement from, between state and council changed from two thirds, one third to three quarters, one quarter. That is, we used to be, we used to contribute 33% as part of our subsidy. We now have increased, they have increased their contribution to now it being 75%. And that includes full operations of Metro, both the city glider services and the PPT, which were not included in the deals offered by people like Mark Bailey or at the, at the peak, or for the vast majority of the time, I should say, by Bart Melish. So this idea that, this idea that somehow this deal is not superior to the one we had before is false. This arrangement allows for a financial arrangement that is much more favorable to Brisbane ratepayers while allowing a, it's not to speak the finances, but ever so briefly, it allows an increased and improved partnership between Brisbane City Council and Translink and the Department to be able to deliver services more effectively to the people of Brisbane. And can I say that in the few months from the operation of this arrangement, I have already felt an improved engagement offering from Translink. And I think that they are, that the opportunity for partnership continues to grow in that place. Now, also 50 cent fares, which is not recorded in these documents, was again credited by the leader of the opposition for being the reason that there's been an uplift in services. Not, and also generally, there was a general criticism about the standard of services and the rollout of bus stops. I just have to take a minute to remind everybody that since the 30th of June, Metro One and Metro Two have been operating in full complete engagement. We have had the biggest single uplift in a service offering of public transport in this city in some generations. That corresponded to the BNBN system, which has seen an increased number of users. It's seen, it's seen more on time running, it's seen a better, more reliable timetable. It's seen the risk of lost time on the Inner South bus tunnel and the Victoria Bridge virtually disappear. And all of that in this environment, which has been again more favorable financially to this organization. The other thing that never gets credited for growth, but I think again, because I've chosen to be very generous to Translink, I think one of the biggest single barrier to a lot of casual users using the public transport system is not the price, but the go card. And now, anyone can use their phone or their normal FPOS card to travel on public transport. And I think that barrier was bigger than a lot of people give it credit for. And we've seen something like 32% of all transport users using their EFT card or their phone. Something like, I think it's a tripling of the use in a sixth month period or something like that. Please don't quote me, but something very much like that. So the removal, the removal of barriers is what engages a public transport user. But once again, I just have to, in the context of people, of individuals in this place saying that there's somehow a diminished public transport offering, I have to remind councillors that the Brisbane Metro M1 system, which has been operating since the 30th of June, excuse me, which has been operating in this quarter, has seen a 50% growth compared to the 111 and the 160. And the M2 has seen a 30% increase in patronage compared to the 66. That sees in this quarter being discussed here, 4.3 million trips taken on the Brisbane Metro. I'll try to say that again, in the quarter that has been told, where we're being told by the opposition that there is a reduction in the standard and offering of service, 4.1 million trips were taken on the brand new, high quality, high frequency services. So no, there is no reduction in the standard of service. In fact, you know, the discussion that we only built two or three bus stops. Well, I would remind councillors of the cultural centre, of the tunnel, of the upgrades to King George Square busway, of the upgrades to UQ, of the upgrades to a series of stations.
Councillor Wise, your time has expired. Further speaker?
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Yeah, point of order.
Can I just check how much time we've got?
31 minutes.
Thank you. Just like to thank you for your fair chairing.
Thank you. Further speaker? It says no further speaker. Write a reply. Sorry, Deputy Mayor, you want to speak?
Yes, please.
Yeah, sure.
Thanks, Mr Chair. Right, well, we've had quite a contribution on this debate for Item C this afternoon. And I rise to contribute and fix a little of the misconceptions that we've heard from those opposite. Item C before us today shows that this period has been a strong and responsible first quarter. Our guiding principle remains simple. Spend less so Brisbane residents don't pay more. Now councillor Cassidy, in his contribution, said he was scratching his head. Well, keep scratching your head councillor Cassidy. A budget review is about comparison. He started.
Point of order, councillor Johnston?
Yes, thank you, Madam, Mr Chair. It's my understanding under section 41.4 that it is the mover, oh, I think it's the mover of a motion that has, sorry, it might not be 41.4.
Sorry, councillor Johnston, Deputy Mayor is speaking, not write a reply.
Oh, well, you called her for a right of reply. So this is, and she does seem to be.
It was a speech, so, yeah, thank you.
Well.
Yep, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, you definitely called her for a right of reply, but thank you. So you agree that that, she can't because she didn't move the motion. That's correct though.
No, she's doing the speech, so thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Mr Deputy Chair. So as I was saying, councillor Cassidy started the debate saying you can't compare years and then he proceeded to compare year on year. And cherry pick this year's number against last year's number, but he's scratching his head saying that you can't compare year on year. Councillor Cassidy also lamented the amount of green waste being recycled during this period. Now, let's have a think about this. The period from June to September, right, so winter time. So councillor Cassidy has an issue with the fact that there's less green waste being recycled during winter in Brisbane. Wow, well, that, that is, I've now heard it all. What was probably the most extraordinary though, Mr Deputy Chair, is a contribution that councillor Strunk made through you. Councillor Strunk said something along the lines of, "The Lord Mayor talks about having the cheapest rates, but at what cost?" So he's come into this place and criticized us for having low rates. I just think it's absolutely remarkable that he would come here and criticize us for having low rates. How do you think his residents would feel about having the lowest rates? Because surely that is something that his residents would support and that is just quite bizarre. When it comes to councillor Griffiths, through you, Mr Deputy Chair.
Point of order.
I can read the paper too.
Point of order. Point of order, councillor Strong. Councillor Strong, what's your point of order?
Yeah, claiming to be misrepresented.
Noted.
Point of order?
Councillor Griffiths.
I'm just seeking clarity, is this a right of reply or is this a general speech?
No, it's another speaker, so.
Okay, thank you.
So as I was saying, Mr Deputy Chair, news flash, the cost of everything continues to increase. Even the surrounding Labor councils agree with us. This is exactly why we have been saying that we need to spend less. If anything, councillor Griffiths' points today illustrate what we have been saying for years. It's time for some responsible financial management. Just as we promised the households in Brisbane that we would, we are doing exactly that. Because it's not our money, it's residents' money. Brisbane households are watching every single dollar. And there is every reason in the world why a council should do exactly the same. Now, the Lord Mayor has said in this place many times, the election commitment was clear, to be financially responsible, to keep costs down and to protect households from unnecessary rate rises. We have continually tackled the cost of. We have continually tackled the cost of living pressures while still meeting the demands of a growing city. Meanwhile, those on the opposite side of the chamber put forward three and a half billion dollars of unfunded spending promises with no financial plan, which would have led to the rate hikes that perhaps councillor Strunk supports.
Sorry, Deputy Mayor, point of order, councillor Johnston?
Again, if this is just a speech, Mr Deputy Chair, then relevance, because this is about the LNP's quarterly budget report, not motions or not election commitments the ALP may have made who knows how long ago, so relevance, yeah, not in the quarterly report, Mr Chair.
I've been allowing liberal debates in here, so, but Deputy Mayor, please come back to the...
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair, because this report shows our plan is working, that's what it shows. It shows that spending has been kept under control, and that is exactly what we've seen in the first quarter. Our responsible financial management keeps downward pressure on household rates and rents, and it's exactly what Brisbane residents ask for us to do. Further, more than seven hundred and thirty-four million dollars in revenue has been received to help fund the frontline services for Brisbane residents. The latest review confirms that net debt is also set to fall by almost twenty percent to twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Now, the Lord Mayor has pointed out previously, this is in stark contrast to every other level of government, which continues to grow its debt.
Deputy Mayor, your time has expired. Further speaker? Councillor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. When the deputy mayor, I rise to speak on, oh, sorry, trust.
Councillor Strunk, your misrepresentation.
My misrepresentation? Yes, the deputy mayor, how shall I be kind here, misrepresented what I said. I said that it's great to have the lowest rates in South East Queensland, but what price services?
Councillor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on the quarterly report. When the deputy mayor says that they have controlled spending, spending has been organised, it's all good to go, all the deputy mayor and residents have to do is open the career mail on Sunday and see that the first heading, they say, is a monumental waste of cash. That is happening right now, with quotes just being exorbitant. We know that for councillor Griffiths, he got forty thousand dollars quoted to build a tap, a critical piece of infrastructure in his park. Councillors, what else have you been quoted on recently? I'm sure you've got some pretty crazy prices, some forty-six thousand dollars tap. We also got three hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars quoted for a pedestrian island in Polara. Now, just recently, as I was at the school, communicating this to the school, that this is what we got, only after then paying an extra tens of thousands of dollars to get a draft design to build this in the first place, in which that design had to include the build of culvert extensions because they weren't already done on Ritchie Road. We then got the notification to our office from outcomes through TAO that this project could no longer be done. And as a result, I didn't understand why that was the case, so wrote the emails back, and then it got the advice that TAO are now looking into this. So there's clearly some miscommunication going on in all of the infrastructure department, which isn't accurately reflected in this annual report. Second to that as well, I know that earlier councillor Griffiths mentioned that we don't have a library in the Calumbell Ward. There are lots of critical pieces of infrastructure that are missing. If we just did an audit of the twenty-six wards around Brisbane City, we could see that there is a case to be made for inequity for outer suburbs. We see this as well in the transport chapter, too. There are still two-thirds of Brisbane residents who can't get access to frequent, high-frequency buses that come to get residents into the trunk and feed a system that councillor Wines is always so proudly talking about. We have so much more to build on and so much more work to catch up on. We're decades behind, respective to other cities in Australia. I want my home, Brisbane City, to be the best place to live in Australia, and I believe that is still the vision that we can still keep up on. So what we need to see is a quarterly report that actually is accurate reflection of where we need to fill in the gaps in Brisbane City, because right now, this isn't it. Another one to address as well in this quarterly report is how a politician has said that they cannot provide this in promotional material and talk about the costs of these projects because it's so embarrassingly high. This has a lot to say about the lack of transparency about our council, let alone the fact that we didn't even get a physical budget book this year at our budget sitting. The council, the LNP council on the other side have been anything but transparent in the past few months, and as a new councillor, myself, and also in front of me councillor Chong Hua, there has been a lack of transparency for new councillors, and it is appalling to see that this is the reputation that Brisbane City Council holds. We have all been elected here to uphold an extraordinary example to make sure that residents are put first, but that's not what we see in this report today. Finally, I just wanted to mention a few extra things. Over the past twenty years of this LNP rule, there have been many playgrounds that have been neglected, so as a result, it would take two hundred thousand dollars to fully replace a playground and then put a shade sale on top, despite the fact that where this happened in Parkinson, there was a shade sale there in the first place, it was taken down and never replaced. And this is an example of a failure to keep up to date with restoring playgrounds across Brisbane City. This is terrible neglect, and it's also quite disingenuous when the council says that you have the suburban enhancement fund that doesn't actually keep up with the pace of inflation as well as the rising cost of construction material, to use that as an excuse as to how we can manage equipment all across Brisbane City when we all know that the LNP council and the Lord Mayor have the biggest control over such a large budget, all collected by ratepayers of Brisbane City, that deserve so much more transparency than what we see in this report here today. It's a terrible example that's placed, and this is what happens when there's complacency over government ruling for a long time. It's time for a change, we saw that in the Calumbell Ward, and there's a few more years to make sure that this transparency is upheld, and Brisbane residents will make sure that their voices are heard. Thank you, Chair.
Further speaker? Is that councillor Collier's? Yeah, councillor Collier.
Thanks very much, Chair. I'll keep my remarks brief. I just, I think it is absolutely extraordinary that the deputy mayor of this city and the chair of the finance committee, who's, you know, responsible for developing this sort of document, could engage in such a level of, I'm not going to dignify it and call it debate, because it just simply wasn't that. You know, councillor Cunningham spent most of her five minutes that she has to talk about, you know, all of the things under her responsibility as the person who's, you know, largely, you know, hand in glove in working with the Lord Mayor to be responsible for all the finances in this city, spent it talking about Labor, talking about, you know, councillor Cassidy, talking about councillor Strunk, and all those things that they've said, and elections, and not once mentioned things like footpaths or housing. She did mention cost of living. I do find it a bit laughable from this LNP council that, you know, they talk about how they're doing everything they can to address the cost of living, but the reality is, is that, you know, there is only actually one thing that this council has done that is, you know, what I'd say is a genuine cost of living relief measure, and that's three months of discounted pool fees, which is great. I think the two-dollar, you know, pool entry programme is a fantastic programme and gets people out and active and engaging in our, you know, amazing community pools, but that's kind of the one thing they've done. In terms of actually affecting household budgets, we know that, and it's shown in this report, and it shows every time someone has to pay a rate bill, that the cost of living in this city under the LNP after more than twenty years in power is only going up. What this financial report shows is that this LNP administration is totally out of touch with Brisbane residents, and what I think is they are out of their depth when it comes to managing complex problems in a growing city. And the residents of Brisbane deserve so much more, they deserve, you know, more than excuses, more than, I guess, cost pushing into future areas, simple projects that can't get delivered, footpaths, you know, that continue to remain broken across Brisbane. I mean, I find it absolutely incredible that, you know, we're out here trumpeting about the fact, or the LNP councillors are out here trumpeting about the fact that we've done, you know, three drainage projects, we've designed four new bus stops in a city with, you know, over a million people and growing. That, to me, just shows, highlights how inadequate what we're doing really is. It's showing that this LNP council is falling behind, and what we do see is that Brisbane residents are paying the cost of that. You know, you only have to look in Programme One to talk about, you know, transport for Brisbane and talk about, you know, I know other councillors have talked a lot about bus services, but it'd be remiss of me not to, again, bring in that real lived experience of people who live in Morningside Ward and are catching ferry services from the Apollo Road ferry terminal, who have had their services cut. That's what this LNP council says is responsible financial management, is cutting half of public transport services from a growing area. And not only that, you know, in libraries, what we're seeing, and I was only contacted the other day by a resident who's coming from outside of this community to attend rhyme time library sessions in Belimba and getting turned away week after week, and they're only, they said, they're only coming to Belimba because the other services in Carina and Carindale have been reduced as well. So we're seeing what those cuts are really looking like time and time again, day and day. And the LNP come into this place and they defend their glossy brochures and say, you know, this is, these numbers are great and these are the highlights, but this is, what it actually reveals is kind of a troubling pattern, is that they continue to, you know, delay projects, there are a very select few projects that have been totally mismanaged, goalposts are always shifting and they're not honest with people about it, and I guess the real thing is, is that what this report shows is that there's a council falling so far behind on meeting just those basic needs that residents rely on. Thanks very much.
Further speaker? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, thank you, I wasn't going to speak, but the deputy mayor, who, like the Lord Mayor, has vanished completely from the chamber, has inspired me to do so, because I really don't think that her statements along the lines of, "You can really see that our budget management is working." Now, I'm not quoting her, I'm just saying that she's very proud of the budget, she's very proud that her financial plan is working, that's actually the word that the deputy mayor used. I know that neither of them here now are to defend their budget, but I just thought I'd run through some of the things that the deputy mayor thinks is working, and perhaps these are things she keeps an eye on along with the Lord Mayor when they're in Dubai or somewhere else overseas, you know, instead of being here in Brisbane doing the jobs that they are paid to do, because all year, the Lord Mayor and the civic chairs have been very busy overseas, and they've got used to doing their job on the road, I think, you know? And perhaps that's reflected in the financial...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order.
Relevance to the report before us.
Yes, councillor, thank you. Councillor Johnston, please come back to the report.
Yeah, yeah, she is, just for me, special. Okay, to be fair, I didn't quite get to city governance, someone might have a look and see if travel's mentioned in city governance for me while I'm speaking. Thank you. But what I do want to talk about is how successful the LNP's financial plan is. Now, this is an administration that openly admits, you know, in the article we've been quoting from here today, five hundred million dollars in budget cuts. There've been almost five hundred staff that have had their contracts terminated, and permanent staff as well, yep. This is an administration that you have to wait years to have basic maintenance issues repaired, like footpaths, takes a couple of years nowadays, road resurfacing can take years, tree trimming, easily a year, easily a year, tree replacement, years. So these are all the things that financially the LNP administration think is working. And I'd like to give you an idea just about how well that it is actually working. So in looking at the quarterly report, the following programmes are, quote, "below budget." So this means that the expenditure that they were planning, which we don't actually know about, right? So it's not like the opposition councillors have had the opportunity to say, "Hey, you're not delivering on your programmes." This is the LNP admitting that they are not delivering on their secret budget, that is only they know about. So they're openly admitting that they cannot deliver against the budgeted commitments of their own secret budget. Transport for Brisbane, expenses are below budget. Now, these are not cuts, these are failure to deliver on basic, basic transport issues in this city, and that is construction of roads, bridges, footpaths, stormwater, whatever it might be. That is a failure to deliver on budgeted, the LNP's budgeted commitments. Infrastructure for Brisbane, expenses are below budget for the period. And again, that relates to the fact that the LNP have not been able to deliver against their own budgeted commitments. And I'm going to give you an example here of something they feel they're proud of, because it's listed on page seventeen. Maintain the City. They completed three hundred and thirty-eight minor footpath maintenance jobs. Yeah, that's minor, minor, so no major repairs to footpaths in the three months to September, none. And that's just putting a bit of asphalt down between the cracked, which they've done after I raised in a very embarrassing video for them due to terrorists, where they did the bitumen a few years ago, and it's got so bad, they've come back and they've done the bitumen again. But you know what? Across three months, that's about three jobs a day. So no footpath replacements in three months, none, zero, already be listed, and about three, maybe three and a half, minor bits of asphalt shoveled into a gap over the last three months. That's how much the financial plan of this administration is working, because if there was enough money to fix the thousand footpath jobs that are out there, five thousand footpath jobs that are out there, they'd be doing it.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Are there further speakers? Councillor Adams?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I stand proudly to speak on Item C today and congratulate the deputy mayor and the Lord Mayor on their responsible financial management, which, most importantly, the most important thing that our residents want to see, which councillor Collier, through you, Madam Chair, says that they're not getting what they want, is downward pressure on household rates and rents. That is how Brisbane residents continue to benefit from the cheapest rates in South East Queensland. I'll say it again, the cheapest rates in South East Queensland. Furthermore, seven hundred and thirty-four million in revenue has been received to help fund the frontline services that we are delivering. And the latest review confirms net debt is set to fall by almost twenty percent in twenty-eight, twenty-nine. In contrast, what we see the state Labor Party leave Queensland debt is soaring by two hundred and eighty-seven percent in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, while the federal government expects a twenty-eight percent increase.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Griffiths?
You wouldn't let councillor Johnson go off topic, this is off topic, councillor. I'd ask you to bring it back to the topic.
Councillor, thank you. Councillor Adams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was talking to the line around net debt that is actually in the report before us today, far more relevant than any community meeting that councillor Cassidy believes may be in this report. But councillor Cassidy, as usual, did start making some inaccurate claims about materials and services and investments in our suburbs. We have a very disciplined approach when it comes to actually completing major projects, Brisbane Metro, Kangaroo Point Bridge, Mogar Road corridor upgrade, and this has all seen reductions in our materials and surfaces. And what does that do? Keeps downward pressure on rates and rents. It's contributed to ninety-three point eight million reduction in materials and services compared to this time last year. Our suburbs first guarantee by Lord Mayor Ager Insurance shows that more than eighty percent of our investment occurs in Brisbane suburbs every year, which contributes to our wonderful lifestyle. And as the LM said already, eighty-five percent of our budget is being invested in the suburbs in this financial year. In fact, the suburban works programme this year is increased funding to deliver even more of those works. But we're also about making sure that we keep Brisbane moving, and councillor Griffiths can spend every Sunday door knocking on the residents in my ward, who are ringing me complaining, "Why is this strange man knocking on my door?", because they are more than happy with the bus network.
Councillor Cassidy, stop calling out, and I caution you and other councillors, stop calling out across the chamber.
The introduction of the Metro with the Adelaide Street Tunnel unblocking the bottlenecks in our network, particularly the entrance into the cultural centre on the buses, has in our network, particularly the entrance into the cultural centre on the buses, has halved the time between Mount Cravat and the city in the morning. We're delivering the most generous pensioner rates in South East Queensland. Of course, I mentioned the metro M1 and M2, 2,600 additional potholes by councillor Hutton's team in customer services, or that might be in councillor Parry's team, sorry councillor Parry as well, and Beams Road, stage one upgrade, starting stage two in the suburbs, making our lifestyle better. And councillor Strunk mentioned it, and guess what, it is actually true. Costs continue to rise, but we still continue to deliver. Inflation is moving in the right direction, but there is still uncertainty in global markets and costs to council are still impacting the bottom line. The cost of building construction, road and bridge construction is up almost 18%. But yet, what are we doing in the Shrinna council? We are keeping downward pressure on rates and rents with sound fiscal management. And when it comes to borrowings, we've embarked on a record infrastructure programme, but we are also making sure that we are keeping those borrowings for delivering, not for keeping the lights on. Our net debt is decreasing each year going forward. The net debt remains less than $4 billion of the annual budget at $3.5 billion, decreasing in each year going forward, which is clear in those papers before us today. And again, by contrast, in other levels of government, we only see net debt climbing and climbing. I have to just mention one thing that councillor said, that our billion in assets increasing, but it's junk value. Well, I don't think that anyone in Brisbane, particularly the over million people that have crossed Kangaroo Point Bridge, think that it is junk value. Only one team has the long track record of delivering strong and disciplined financial management with a strong credit rating for 13 consecutive years. Team Shrinna with Adrian Shrinna and the deputy mayor Fiona Cunningham, congratulations on a brilliant outcome.
Councillor, thank you, your time. Further speakers? Councillor Davis.
Oh, thank you very much, excuse me, Madam Chair, and I rise to speak on item C, the annual operational plan progress and quarterly financial report for September. But Madam Chair, before I go into that, I must confess that every council meeting, I like to pick the funniest thing that I've heard during the course of the meeting. Today's winner, Madam Chair, was when councillor Johnson said, "I really wasn't going to speak." And then she said, "I wasn't going to speak for very long." But I digress. Madam Chair, we've delivered very strong outcomes in the previous financial quarter, which continue to be headlined by the work that we've done in our parks and natural environment. I'd like to start by touching on the progress we've made under our Sustainable and Resilient Community Programme, covering everything from our free native plants programme to what's happening in our environment centres, among other important measures relating to our city's flood resilience. We all know how important education is for the community. Our three environment centres continue to do a great job of inspiring our youngest residents and inspiring good environmental stewardship. Last quarter, we welcomed over 32,000 visitors with nearly 7,000 participants engaging in our community programmes. We also had almost 3,200 students pass through our environmental school programme. Madam Chair, this once again demonstrates just how important our environment centres are, and we're very unfortunate to have such incredible educational spaces, creating more to see and do for less. Madam Chair, also under the banner of our Sustainable and Resilient Community Deliverables, we saw a surge in the use of our flood information online platform. Flood preparedness is part of our DNA. We led the way with flood information over a decade ago, now as the first council to provide free and accessible flood information online. Our flood information online platform has been the cornerstone of our efforts, ensuring residents are informed and prepared for the risks. The quarter, this quarter, our floodwise property report downloads increased from 47,727 to 65,600, and our flood awareness map views increased from 926,152 to 1.8 million. We've integrated new flood study data into the city plan and continue to use the latest technology to improve accuracy. This proactive approach means residents can remain safe, confident and ready. Over the years, we've noticed a greater awareness and understanding of our flood tools and our risk, and our flood information online tools have had a large role to play in that, which is very pleasing to see. Now moving to our low carbon and clean environmental initiatives, last quarter, we secured a 50-50 funding arrangement with the Australian Government under the Community Energy Upgrade Fund, and this will see more than $2.4 million flow into the delivery of solar panels across 18 council sites, 27 own community facilities, as well as electric charging hub at our regional operations centre. And late last week, we passed an important milestone, having installed 250 kilowatts under the programme, which is equivalent of 500 solar panels. This initiative will help reduce emissions and power bills so that community organisations spend less on electricity bills, on more and more-
Sorry councillor Davis, I'll have to stop you there. Under provisions of section 3513 of the meeting's local law on the expiration of the period allowed for debate of committee reports, I shall now put the motions to the meeting for the adoption of any committee report not yet voted upon without further amendment or debate. So we'll now put item C to the vote. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Chongwa and seconded by councillor Cassidy. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clerks, please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour and eight against.
That is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Public Transport Committee Report, all those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Infrastructure Committee Report, all those in-
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Could I ask for item B, you be taking seratum for voting on the Infrastructure Committee, please?
We'll now put items A and C to the vote. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it, that is carried. We'll now put item B to the vote. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Massey. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clerks, please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour and eight against.
That is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Please resume your seats, it's carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. We'll now put City Planning, Suburban Renewal and Economic Development Committee to the vote. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it, that is carried.
Division.
Division. Division called by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Givney. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clerks, please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour and eight against.
That is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee, all those in favour.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Chongwa.
I'd like to take item B and D in seratum for voting purposes, please.
B and D separately?
Together, yes.
Okay. So I'll now put A and C to the vote. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it, that is carried. And we'll now put B and D together, vote together. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Chongwa, seconded by councillor Massey. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clerks, please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 22 in favour, two against and one abstention.
That is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Customer Services Committee, all those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it, that is carried. Community and the Arts Committee, all those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it, that is carried. And Finance and City Governance Committee, all those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Allen.
Madam Chair, I have petition requesting council stop development of multiple dwellings in Wavell Heights.
Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a petition requesting council conducts an investigation to ensure that the primary path through the Howard Smith Orffs is compliant with the Disability Discrimination Act.
Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have a petition from the people of Mount Nevo for Mount Nevo Road.
Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I have a petition requesting council install a speed bump before a stop sign in Donellan Street at Grainsoaps.
Just checking if, yeah, councillor Atwood.
I have one. Thank you, Chair. I have petition to install a pedestrian crossing between Morton Bay College and the Wandle Road bus stop.
Councillor Dixon, may I have a motion for receipt of the petitions?
Yep. Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concern for consideration and report.
Second.
It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Strunk that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concern for consideration and report. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? That now takes us to general business. Are there any items of general business? Councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I rise today to reflect on the official opening of the new Onfe Italian Club in Stafford that I attended a couple of weeks ago. It was truly an extraordinary occasion and one that honoured more than 60 years of cultural heritage, community service and the enduring contribution of Italian people in our community. The Onfe Italian Club was originally founded in 1962 and it was established to support Italian migrants seeking connection, opportunity and a sense of belonging in their new home. Standing among the hundreds of people gathered at that new Stafford venue, some of those people are in this room with us today, councillor Howard and councillor Davis, my neighbours, and of course, the old Italian club was in councillor Howard's ward for many, many years. I was reminded of just how profoundly that mission of the Onfe Italian Club has shaped generations of people. One of the most moving parts of the event was hearing the history of Onfe retold, particularly the legacy of its founder here in Brisbane, Comendatore Carmelo Caruso. His recent passing made the occasion even more poignant for his family and for the many people whose lives he touched. His vision and dedication-
Sorry councillor Parry, can I just stop you there for a minute? Both sides of the chamber, there's a lot of chatter going on and it's very hard to hear councillor Parry doing her general business. So if you can please take any conversations outside. Councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And as I was saying, his recent passing made the occasion even more poignant for his family and for the many people whose lives he touched. His vision and dedication have left an imprint on Brisbane's multicultural fabric and the new facility stands as a testament to his life's work. Of course, it would be remiss of me not to mention that the club was opened by Premier David Christopherley and our own Lord Mayor, both of whom reflected on their own family's migrant journey.
Bellissimo.
The premier's nonno found his place in Australia at an Italian club in Ingham and the Lord Mayor's father met his mother at a German club in Sydney. So just think, of all the future premiers and Lord Mayors we can look forward to, thanks to our much-loved community clubs. Of course, these organisations wouldn't exist without the volunteer committees that hold them together, that run these events, that make sure we're invited and do all the work behind the scenes. So I'd like to acknowledge the committee, particularly Rita Borzakella and Rosie Chikiti, they're going to hate me for pronouncing their names like that, and all of the other members of the committee, particularly honouring several longstanding contributors to their journey. Here we go. Signora Paolo Greco, who served on the committee as early as 1966. Concezione Ottobrandi, who devoted over 50 years as his secretary. Gianna Rodolfi, whose more than 30 years of service continues today. And Giuseppe Colagrande, who has contributed since the 1970s. Their combined service, grazie, grazie. Their combined service spans lifetimes and their commitment is a reminder that the strength of any community organisation lies in the dedication of its people. The opening also acknowledged the generosity and labour that made the new club possible. Significant thanks extended are extended to Mr Damian Cavallucci, whose support was instrumental, and to Tony Maruka, Tony is an excellent man, and Chris Callis, who volunteered countless hours to help bring this new venue to life. Since the club quietly opened its doors six months ago in the great suburb of Stafford, more than 1,200 members have already joined. That overwhelming response speaks not only to the popularity of the new facility, but to the ongoing desire among families, young and old, of all backgrounds, to connect with each other and connect with their heritage. The new club has quickly become a gathering place for culture, celebration and community. The event was attended by an extraordinary list of dignitaries, I will read them out. I've already mentioned a few, of course councillor Howard and councillor Davis here. But we also had the Lady Meris, Nina Shrinna, we also had Mrs Teague and Christopherley, we had the Italian consul, the lovely Luna Angelina Maranucci, we had the Honourable Nicola Carde, who travelled from Rome for the occasion, we had Rosie Vecchio, who's the president of Comites, we had, of course, Mrs Maria Maruka, who is the president of the Onfe Italian Club, who is a wonderful lady and did so much work to get this together despite losing her father weeks ago, was just incredible, and her beautiful mother, Mrs Rena Caruso, who was Carmelo's wife, who was there as well. And it was a very emotional day for them, but gosh, they put on a show and lots of delicious food. And of course, all of the presence of these people underscored the importance of Onfe within the broader Italian community. What struck me the most- What struck me the most about this facility was, even though it's new, it's modern and beautifully designed, it was a sense of continuity. This club is more than bricks and mortar. It will be around for generations to come. I extend my heartfelt congratulations to the Onfay committee, to all the volunteers, sponsors, donors and supporters who brought this vision to life. And I look forward to this wonderful facility, a place that is full of family, community, pride and heritage will continue to flourish in Stafford for many, many years to come. Grazie, grazie!
Further speakers. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, I'm going to see councillor Parry, her Italian and German, and raise it to the Greek community and talk about... I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm going to be able to do the pronunciations very well. However, I was absolutely honoured to represent the lord mayor at the Greek Orthodox community of St George's.
Sorry councillor Howard, sorry. Point of order councillor Johnston.
Yes, just if councillor Howard could state what she's planning to speak to at the beginning of general business, that is generally the rule. Thank you.
Oh, Madam Chair, I'm so sorry that I didn't do that. I'm so sorry. Could you all please forgive me for not announcing what I'm going to talk about? Because what I'm going to talk about is the Greek Orthodox community of St George's, fiftieth golden and at Jubilee of the Ladies Auxiliary. Thank you, thank you. Yes, so now through you, Madam Chair, I will also be relying on councillor Adaman, who happens to be married to a beautiful Greek lady, to help me with some of the pronunciations. But can I say that I attended this event on the same evening as the lord mayor was here with the Multicultural Business Awards? And so I know that many in this chamber attended that and it's a marvellous event. But it was fantastic to represent him at the Greek club, who also is celebrating fifty years. And of course, we were joined by Frida Valasarkis, thank you. Now Frida is the first female president, much like Maria for the Italians. Frida is leading the charge for the Greek community of St George's and is doing an absolute marvellous job. And I have to put on the record that Frida and I have something in common in that both of our, her father and my grandfather were conductors on the Brisbane trams. And they both wore those beautiful little caps and we always reminisce when we see each other. So it was, it was an amazing event because it did celebrate such a milestone and there were, it was an evening of awards as well. But to, to hear the stories of the women of the community who came together fifty years ago and their dedication and leadership to support the community. So on the twenty-first of November nineteen seventy-four, the ladies got together and formed their very first committee. And their very first committee had Anne Critias as the president from nineteen seventy-four to nineteen seventy-six. And Anne was instrumental in getting it all started. And of course, the committee also went on not only to support the church, but also to support Panegyri, to support Export eighty-eight at the Greek Pavilion, and also fundraising for St Nicholas Nursing Home and for the welfare centre. And I'm not sure if others in the, in the chamber have been to the Greek club and the, and the church that is there. But they also have a childcare centre, they also have classes where they teach the language. And it truly is an amazing opportunity for the Greek community to give so much back to the West End community. They've been there, as I said, for fifty years. And Frida and her team do an absolutely amazing job. And what they will be looking forward to next year, of course, is celebrating fifty years of Panegyri. So it really is a great opportunity. And I just want to put on the record my huge appreciation for making me so welcome, because they did. The food was amazing. They sent us home with sweets that the ladies had made themselves. They'd made the desserts. It was just a beautiful, beautiful evening of everyone coming together. And I just want to say, how fortunate are we in Brisbane to have such a multicultural community where we can celebrate? Italian, Greek, whatever, whatever there is there. They're so welcoming and so beautiful. And, you know, it is really wonderful to think that we have that community in Brisbane, that we can all come together. And so happy birthday to the Ladies Auxiliary of Greek Orthodox Community of St George's.
Further general business. Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I rise to speak this evening about vape shops, to not only address a petition, but also some comments that have been made in this place. Comments that while they might have been passionate, were based on a misunderstanding of the law, mischaracterisation of council's role and a willingness to promise community powers that council simply does not possess. So let me be clear from the outset. The Shriner Council is committed to standing up for Brisbane when it comes to crime. But what we will not do is mislead residents by pretending we hold authority that sits squarely with the state government and federal regulators. As we have always said, crime is primarily a state responsibility. And through you, Madam Chair, councillor Collier seems to think that we can stop approving vape shops. But what she doesn't realise is the term shops is defined in the Planning Regulation extremely broadly. Council do not assess specific types of shops because we are legally unable to do this. What councillor Collier has also not communicated is the sale of illegal vapes and the sale of nicotine to a minor is already illegal. It's not a licensing issue. It's not a development issue. It's a criminal issue. In fact, the only place where it's legal to sell vapes to people is a prescription with a pharmacy. So in essence, was the deputy leader of the opposition saying that pharmacies shouldn't be allowed to operate near schools? Unfortunately, councillor Collier has this one all wrong. We cannot pass a buck that we have never had in the first place. The sale of these products is illegal and it is the responsibility of the Queensland Government, through Queensland Health and the Therapeutic Goods Administration and the Queensland Police Service. Now, I'm pleased to update the chamber that just last Thursday, the Minister for Health announced that the Christopher Lee government is continuing its nation-leading crackdown on criminal gangs and illegal vape traders, passing the Tobacco and Other Smoking Products dismantling Illegal Trade and Other Legislation Amendment Bill 2025 in Parliament. This legislation gives Queensland Health the authority to shut down illegal businesses for three months, up from three days, without any lengthy court process. Queensland Health can now seize all lawful smoking products found at illegal stores that are tainted by being supplied or stored alongside illicit tobacco and vapes, including confectionery, food and other goods sold at these shops. Queensland Health officers can now conduct undercover operations at illicit tobacco and vape stores. Landlords also have new powers to terminate leases when they are notified their tenant is an illegal operator. And Madam Chair, it is now officially a criminal offence for commercial landlords to knowingly permit illegal tobacco activity with a maximum penalty of a hundred and sixty-six thousand nine hundred dollars and twelve months imprisonment. So for those opposite here in this chamber, to insist that we need to block licences that we don't issue, enforce laws that we don't hold, or stop the sale of products we're not legally empowered to regulate, it's not policy leadership, it's simply political theatre. Councillor Collier may also be interested to learn specifically that since last year's state election, the Christopher Lee government has seized more than fifty-seven million illicit cigarettes, seven point seven tonnes of loose tobacco, four hundred and seventy-five thousand illicit vapes and four hundred and five thousand nicotine pouches. That is how you tackle this problem, Madam Chair.
Further speakers to general business, please. No further speakers? Councillors, I draw your attention to the notice of motion at item eight on the agenda. Councillor Griffiths, would you please move the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So in accordance with section one hundred and fifty AEA of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, Brisbane City Council withdraws and discontinues all current complaints referred under section one five OJ of the Local Government Act in light of the state government's new legislation tabled in Parliament on the twentieth of November twenty twenty-five that abolishes these conduct breach provisions.
Do we have a second up? Is it councillor Collier? No, one moment. Councillor Collier?
Yes.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Griffiths, seconded by councillor Collier, that in accordance with section one fifty AEA of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, the LG Act, Brisbane City Council withdraws and discontinues all current complaints referred under section one hundred and fifty J of the Local Government Act in light of the state government's new legislation tabled in Parliament on the twentieth of November twenty twenty-five that abolishes these conduct breach provisions. Councillor Griffiths.
Point, point of order.
One moment. Point of order councillor Johnston.
Yes, Madam Chairman. As the subject of some of these referrals, I would just like to confirm, I don't believe I have a conflict of interest, but I am raising it as an issue in case others in the chamber believe I have a conflict of interest. And I'll be guided by the chamber's view.
Thank you. Yes, that could be the case. So I'm just checking with councillors, we'll put that, I think, put it to the, one moment. I think what we'll just put to the vote is whether councillor Johnson should be able to remain for the duration of this debate and vote. So it's also voting. Actually, yeah, councillor Dixon, you might have to put the motion, not me, because as chair, I shouldn't be putting that motion, but then I'll call for the vote. That's what we're needing.
All right. So we're just doing a motion just to see whether the chamber determines whether councillor, sorry councillor Johnson has a conflict of interest.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
And I need a second up?
Seconded, thank you. It's been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Givney to determine whether councillor Johnson has a conflict of interest and needs to remove herself from the chamber during debate and for voting. So all those who believe she should remove herself, say aye.
Aye!
Those who feel no, no.
No!
The ayes have it.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order councillor.
Can I just ask and seek some clarification? Because we've also got councillor Griffiths and councillor Cassidy in this motion and I'm concerned that we also have a conflict of interest there too. Can I, can I ask for you to seek some legal advice?
Just one moment. Can I just get councillor Dixon to call for a brief adjournment and I'll just clarify that and a few other things.
Could I just move a motion that we adjourn for a period of ten minutes to work through a few things? Yep.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Givney for an adjournment of ten minutes. All those in favour say aye.
Aye!
Those against no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we'll be back in ten. Councillors, I was going to, as the motion was moved, the councillors believed they should, that councillor Johnson should leave the meeting. I was going to open it up for her to then give her the opportunity to say why she felt she needed to stay for the debate. But unfortunately, she has not returned. So we'll, yep.
Point of order, Chair. I think it's best that we move a motion to lay this on the table.
Seconded.
Councillor, a motion has been moved by councillor Dixon to lay the motion on the table and seconded by councillor Givney.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Cassidy.
Just in terms of procedure, just trying to follow along here, you just said that the vote we had before on the voices about excluding councillor Johnston, and then there was the adjournment. And you just said now it was going to be debated after the vote. And now we've had a, before councillor Griffiths could even introduce the motion, the motion laid on the table, so just...
Yeah, when a councillor, when, you know, they do not want to leave and don't feel they have a conflict of interest, she was going to be given the chance to say why she felt she needed to stay. And, and then obviously it's your responsibility, councillors, if you feel you have conflict of interest to declare that. And if you don't, then we can continue. But councillor Dixon has stood and said that, and moved the motion that we lay it on the table.
Point of order.
Which I need to put to the vote. Councillor Cassidy.
Just in terms of, there has been something raised before this adjournment by councillor Hutton about councillor Griffiths and I and you were seeking legal advice.
Yes.
We haven't raised those issues, but it has now been raised.
Yes, and so I'm telling you, that's why I said it's your responsibility to determine whether you feel that you have conflict of interest. Councillor Cassidy.
It is also, there's a positive obligation on other councils to raise that if they believe there's a conflict of interest. So given we were halfway through councillor Hutton raising that, can I just, is that a live issue right now for the chamber? Or was the advice that it is not?
Well, we were about to go into that debate of whether there were any more conflicts of interest. But councillor Dixon has raised point of order and asked that it be laid upon the table.
Point of order. Yeah, I'd just like you to provide us with the advice you received.
No, I haven't got any written advice. And looking in, in the meaning's local law, I've looked at section fourteen subsection seven myself and debate and vote as to whether the councillors can participate in the decision-making. So that's what we were going to do. Just one moment.
Point of order.
Yeah, and as it says, you know, it is also for councillors to decide whether they have a declarable interest. And, you know, obviously you would have the opportunity then to say whether you do or don't. And that is in section fourteen subsection seven. Yep, so it has been requested that it be laid on the table. Obviously, when that then comes off the table, then that is when you will have to still do that. So yes, that just got, well, somebody has already called for it to be laid on the table. We haven't put it to the vote yet. But it is important that when someone has moved for it to be laid on the table, that we vote. And I'm making it clear now that when it does eventually come off the table, if it does go on the table, then we will have that debate.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Cassidy.
Can, can a procedural motion for laying something on the table be done outside of debate? So for instance, councillor Griffiths had moved this motion, seconded by councillor Collier. He was about to start speaking and before he even said a word, what I think is... is a procedural motion, point of order, has been made to lay it on the table. Is, is that allowed?
I understand what you're saying, it can be done during debate, and so, you know, and we would have gone side to side as well, so the councillor has raised that we do a procedural motion, so yes, it can during that debate. Just, I'll get the.
I didn't, point of order, I didn't get the opportunity to even speak to the motion.
Okay. We will allow you councillors to do that. Sorry councillor Dixon, it, it, we'll wait until they've had their, which is probably better councillors, frankly, to get that sorted.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order councillor Adaman.
If we are continuing with this debate, I believe that councillor Cassidy and councillor Griffiths have a conflict of interest in this motion, and should exit themselves from the chamber.
Point of order, I don't believe I have a material conflict of interest in relation to this motion.
Thank you.
And we, we participated in the motions that actually sent us off to the tribunal in the first place, and no one had a problem with that either.
Point of order.
Councillor Cassidy.
I don't believe I have a declarable or material personal interest in this matter.
Okay. Okay, as councillor, I'm going to do one at a time. As councillor Griffiths has chosen to remain in the council chamber, deputy mayor, may I please have a motion that their participation in the motion, for their participation in the motion? Just for councillor Griffiths first.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move that this chamber determine that councillor Griffiths may participate in the meeting in relation to the matter, including by voting on the matter.
Seconded. Moved by deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Dixon, all those in favour say aye. Those against, no. Now, so that is carried. Yeah, and now we'll move for councillor Cassidy to stay. As councillor Cassidy has chosen to remain in the council chamber, deputy mayor, may I please have a motion about their participation in the motion?
Madam Chair, I move that this chamber determine that councillor Cassidy may participate in the meeting in relation to the matter, including by voting on the matter.
Seconded. Thank you. It's been moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Dixon, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. Thank you councillors, sorry, that was a bit clunky, we haven't had to do that before. Now, we'll now move to the actual motion. Councillor, are there any speakers on the motion? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, and I think what we've seen here today is the absurdity of the current legislation that, which David Christopher Lee, as Premier, has said he does not support in relation to the councillor code of conduct. So, and this legislation, from my perspective, and I'm sure from other councillors on this side, and I've said this repeatedly in the chamber, has just been used politically over and over again, both in this chamber and apparently across local governments, across the state, where it is used by one group of politicians to attack another group of politicians. I know I've been through this eight or 10 times in my 22 years in this chamber. And I think the point that the Premier has said is that this doesn't apply to state or federal members, and it shouldn't apply to councillors. That the, the way you get rid of someone out of the chamber is through the ballot box. If you don't like the way they're performing, you don't attack the person and use a legal process to get rid of them. I actually support him. I think that makes sense, and I certainly said that to my Labour colleagues when they're in power. So what we have here is a Premier and an LMP government who are going, we're going to listen to local governments, this doesn't make sense, this has been misused, and we're going to change legislation. And the point here tonight is that we now have the LMP government at the state level have said that they want to move or change this legislation, and by removing or changing it, currently has been introduced to the Parliament.
First reading.
First reading, and it's gone off, going to go off to committee to be looked at, and I think will be looked at by the end of the Christmas break. It will come back to their chamber for vote. But not only is that process happening, but we also know, and I know from listening for the last few weeks in this chamber, particularly councillor Wines has said repeatedly, he doesn't agree with the process of the councillor code of conduct, and particular councillor code of conduct breaches. So that's good, so we've got the state lined up, we've got the Premier lined up, we've got this chamber lined up, LMP members in this chamber. The other factor is, we also know for me, every time you get one of these codes of conduct, it costs about $20,000 or $30,000. That's for me, but then that is covered by our insurance. But we know it also costs the OYA, or OIA, approximately $30,000 as well. This is a huge waste of money for a process that is political, that is self-serving, and, and that shouldn't be here. So what I'm proposing in this motion is that we get rid of, and the LMP can do this tonight in this chamber, we get rid of the current, the current charges against the current members of this council chamber, that they be dropped. Because that can be done through, that can be done by the LMP, and can be done through legislation. I would encourage all councillors in this chamber to see that this has been a process that's corrupt, that has been misused, that's wasted a lot of time and effort, and frankly money, and get on with governing the city. That's what this motion is about, and I'd encourage all councillors to support it. Thank you.
Further speakers. Councillor Dixon.
Okay, so Madam Chair, I rise to speak on the motion. So having Labour councillors bring a motion to support the Christopher Lee government's changes to the Local Government Act, overturning the former Labour government's changes, wasn't quite what I expected to see at today's meeting. But as I said last week, we do welcome the Christopher Lee government's proposed amendments to the councillor conduct framework. I'm glad that Labour councillors have finally gotten on board with our repeated calls over several meetings, that we don't support the current legislation when it came to dealing with councillor complaints. But at this stage, that's all they are, is proposed. The bill has been read a first time and referred to the relevant committee for consultation. It is yet to return to the House. Now, I'm happy to give a little lesson about what happens to bills at Parliament House. The bills are read three times before being adopted by Parliament, at which point they receive royal assent or commence operation by proclamation. Put simply, it isn't yet law, it is a long way from being law, it may still be changed. And we are following the law as it currently applies. But in their eagerness to avoid this admittedly onerous process, the opposition has jumped the gun. It is probably the most cynical and self-serving motion I have seen from the opposition. It is telling Madam Chair that the leader of the opposition wouldn't put his name to it. So with that in mind, I would like to move a procedural motion, that I think it is best that we move, lay this motion on the table.
Seconded. Has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Givney to lay the motion on the table. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Griffiths and seconded by councillor Strunk, ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clerks, please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 14 in favour, four against, and one abstention.
And that is carried. Thank you councillors, that now ends today's meeting.